Welcome to the Committee of the Whole Meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is October 11th, 2023. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Gunter.
Here.
Councilmembers Costin.
Here.
Cummings.
Here.
Hayden.
Here.
Long.
Here.
Shepherd.
Here.
Steinkie.
Here.
Welsh.
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you. Item four is business. Four A is citizens' input time. Before we get into the citizens' input, people in the audience, could we see a show of hands of anyone who wishes to speak on citizens' input today? And the reason that I ask that question, normally citizens' input is three minutes long, so if you do the math, that's only about 20 people. It appears that we have more than 20 speakers out there today. So I wanted to ask council if we want to maybe reduce citizens' input from three minutes to two minutes, so we can get... It's either that or once we get to an hour, there's only an hour. So you're good with the hour? Okay. All right. We'll keep it the same. Well, council will make that decision. Do we want to stick with the three minutes, where we'll probably only have 20 speakers? Or do we want to go to two minutes, so we could theoretically get more people? So that'll be a council decision. So we'll start with Councilmember Long, and we'll go down the line to see what the majority wants to do.
Three minutes is fine with me. It sounds like the consensus out there was that they would like the three minutes.
Okay. Councilmember Cummings?
I'm agreement, three minutes.
Councilmember Welsh?
Three is fine. Just if the audience knows that there's a lot of speakers, so if they don't want to use their full three minutes, just to be courteous of the other residents that want to speak. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good point. Typically, when you're after the two, between the two and three minute mark, you're starting to repeat yourself. So just remember, there could be 10 to 15 people that don't get to speak, that may have something important to say. So be cognizant of your time, but three minutes is fine.
Yeah, and I agree. You know, a lot of times when you have a particular topic, there's some redundancy in the comments. So if you have something to weigh in on, of course, we want to hear what your comment is, but if 10 people before you have already made that same exact comment, I think we got the message up here. Councilmember Shepherd?
Three minutes.
I would have rather heard from more people, but three minutes is fine with me.
Okay. All right. So we'll keep the rules the same. That we will slate for an hour, so it's almost 9:05. We'll go to 10:05. Just remember, it's a maximum of 60 minutes, except for the input of matters concerning city government. Three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name. We'll utilize the podium to my left, your right. Anyone who wishes to speak, please come forward. Good, sir.
Good morning. My name is Steve Puskwal. I live on Southeast 19th Avenue at the Anchorage condominiums.
Microphone working?
I'm in Mr. Steinkie's district, I believe. Said your name right. What is, I'm going to ask some questions. I know you're not going to answer them now, but in your conversation later, maybe you can incorporate that. What is the function of city government? Let's get back to basic civics and law about government, all right? And the function of city government is to provide safety for its residents. We do that through police, fire, et cetera. And also to provide services to the government, waters or whatever else, storm drains, all the things the city does. It certainly is not hospitality or entertainment business. The city has no business in that. They don't do it well anywhere around the country. So that's my statement on that. Regarding Hurricane Ian, no repairs of any extent were done at J.C. Park. They cleaned up, they straightened up, but I was just down there this morning. I did my walk. Actually, I did it before dusk, so I probably should have been arrested or something. I don't know. But the, fix it. All those rotten boards down there and everything else, which were that way before the storm, parks and recreation needs to be on that. Shouldn't be anybody else involved with that. Parks and recreation, it's their park. Clean it up, straighten it up. Mayor Gunter, at the last meeting, you threw out a statistic or a number regarding how many people signed a petition. And I remember it was a very low number regarding the total population of the city. The total population of the city has nothing to do with a local petition, all right? If you looked at the number of people who reside in the area that park generally services, you would find that 5,000 number to be way higher than the number you said. People in the Northeast Cape probably can't even find J.C. Park most of the time, all right? So that's it. It's a neighborhood park, a neighborhood park made for the people who live there and reside there. I was here yesterday afternoon at noontime, the place was packed. There were kids, kids, dogs on leashes, people walking around. All the parking spots were taken up along the line. And again, this morning, bright and early, I went down there with my flashlight and did my walk. Now, there's a big grant, right, for trees? I understand the city received, and that money should be used in the parks. I don't know what, how the grant was written. I haven't seen it.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Marie Kavanaugh, and I am here to talk about J.C. Park today. I looked at the revised plans your people posted online, and as it sits right now, the current shade canopy in J.C. Park is 6.48 acres. That's, these are your numbers, by the way. I'm not fabricating them. Now, the proposed sun shade in this thing is only 2.1 acres. And after five years of the trees growing, provided you water them, because your reputation for maintaining parks in this city is pathetic at best, you will only have 3.6 acres after five years. And it's still half of what's there now. But you don't care. You don't care. You've put part of, three, excuse me, half an acre of that are these sun sails, which are going to have to be replaced. Strong winds are going to blow them off. You're going to have to designate city resources to replace those things. They're going to fade out within a year. To me, it's very obvious, the people who designed this never lived in southwest Florida. The sun is brutal. You need to change the name of that park to Sunstroke Park. And you put, and you put those sails over what I call the pee pad, which is the splash pad, because you put kids with cold water, guess what you get? And there is going to, it's going to build up mold there. You're going to have to have people there to monitor the water coming out of that thing. And are you, are you doing anything about it? You're going to have to have full-time employees at that park. The band shell needs to go. It's not fair to all the people, the thousands of people that own condos in that area, for you to have some band in the middle of the night tut tut tutin' and playing their drums or whatever they're doing, and disturbing the peace and tranquility of that area. But apparently, none of you care, because none of you, you've already made up your minds. We're standing here talking, and you are not listening. You work for us. You work for us, and you're doing a pathetic job of it.
We're not going to have any applause. If you want to raise your hands, that's fine, but absolutely no applause.
Good morning, councilpeople and mayor. I would like to mention the person that donated the park to the city, and that is Sally Flash. Sally Flash donated it to the city, the land. I think you should respect her wishes and have empathy and understanding that she still wants a green park just as it is. She donated the land. She has more say than any of you sitting up here or all 200,000 people in this city. You should understand what she wants. It will only take one of you to say, we are going to honor the gal, the lady that donated this park, and we're going to keep it as a park right today and stop this nonsense about band shells and food trucks, et cetera. Gloria Tate researched this and found the owner's name, and this is what she wants. And this is what you should do if you have any empathy and compassion for her. Gloria wanted me to mention that the Brazilian pepper should be taken out, but the Australian pines stayed in, because you can see the skyline through the Australian pines where the Brazilian peppers, you can't see the beautiful river or skyline, and this is another thing to consider when working on this park. But the main thing is, do what the person that donated the park to you wanted, and be compassionate to her. If you're not, I don't think much of you. Thank you.
Good morning. Afghanistan, 2021. Let's go back a little bit. 2016, your predecessors paid $140,000 for a park master plan. It was 126 pages, and I'd like to ask, but of course I won't, who read it? Now, even if you did read it, it's obvious that you have ignored it. So first of all, I'm wondering why you haven't sued the company that made that program, because obviously, it's totally wrong. There's nothing in the, and I know you're going to say, things have changed in Cape Coral, and there's nobody that would refute that, but the definitions of parks haven't changed. A neighborhood park is the same neighborhood park today as it was in 2016. There is nothing in that 126 pages that said a neighborhood park should have a marina, should have alcohol, should have amphitheaters, or food trucks. Now, you know, what surprises me is you are so willing to listen to a, or to follow a law that was put into effect in Tallahassee about ripping down trees that were planted to do a job and have done that job. You're willing to rip those trees down, but you're not willing to listen to all the people that have come here, meeting after meeting after meeting, to tell you that we don't have time to wait for you to put up your trees that give us 10 square feet of shade. If you look around this crowd, a lot of us will be dead by the time you get your shade up there to where it is today. We didn't come down here to sit there and watch you rip a, rip a park away. Now, are there improvements that should be made? Yes, there's some good parts to that program. But it's time that you stepped and stepped back and listened to the people that you're serving. Now, what does Afghanistan have to do with this? Well, if you look at Afghanistan and look at the United States, we pay billions of dollars to our military to teach them how to do a job. And yet, the brilliant people in Washington decided how to leave Afghanistan. It was the biggest fiasco we've seen. Now, you folks are not the experts in parks. You are just like the Washington folks who are making decisions contrary to the experts. I think it's time you step back, take yourself out of, I have the power, therefore, I can do it, and decide you should listen to the people here and make changes to that park that work for us and work for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Sally Troutman. According to the city's own consultants hired in 2020, the city had too few neighborhood parks, and they strongly recommended setting up more of them throughout the city. J.C. Park is said to be one of the gems of Cape Coral. It is much-loved and highly utilized neighborhood park. And someone already spoke about the gift, and the gift was that it should be used for recreation. No businesses should be in a neighborhood park, and as designated, the 5,000 signatures on the petition should suffice as notifying the council that neighborhood residents are not only against the renovation, but also against the removal of our pine shade trees, which, by the way, are drought-tolerant, salt-tolerant, low-maintenance, energy-efficient, storm-resilient, and provide a beautiful, unique vista. The statutes to remove these pines were initially enacted to protect commercial agricultural interests. J.C. Park has no such interests. In 1992, in Gulf Stream, excuse me, Florida, the two-mile stretch of North Ocean Boulevard and the accompanying pine canopy were designated by the Florida Legislature as a state historic scenic highway. As such, the historical canopy continues to be preserved and maintained. Other cities that still have these pines are Fort Lauderdale and Fort Zachary Taylor in Key West. The Florida Park Service will only remove Australian pines in Fort Zachary Taylor Historic State Park if the pines have died, are toppled by winds, or constitute a public safety. The seniors in this neighborhood need a safe shady place to exercise. Taking that away is going to make us less healthy and more exposed to the sun in our later years. And many of us don't have five to 10 years to wait for newly planted trees to create a shade canopy. Therefore, I urge the city to request an exemption for the Australian pines from the state, as the pines have proven to be needed and useful. It is cheaper to keep these pines and request an exemption than take them down and plant more trees. Please save our $12 million. We are against this renovation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, mayor and council. Lori House-Bulcock, 2723 Archer Parkway East. I'm here as someone who has walked, enjoyed, and bird-watched in that park and seen dolphins in that park, but I'm also here as a member of Cape Coral Wildlife Trust and Cape Coral Friends of Wildlife. And I just want to thank you for bringing the initial plan back to the planners and having them take a serious look at it, and I can see that you did consider some of the things that we said, so thank you for that. I just have three quick things, because, and I think everyone should be more brief than they wanted to, so we could get more people talking. These are the things I ask of you as you consider this and consider how you're going to vote. Number one, please respect the needs, rights, and quality of life of the people that live around there. Number two, no matter what you're going to do with the water's edge, I want a very strict, strong environmental impact statement, and I think that the public should be able to look that over before anything happens. And I'd like there to be retained as many elements of the existing park as possible. So thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
Good morning, city council. My name is Tom Rossi. I'm with 19 Pine Island Road. I'm talking about the Pine Island Road District. We own 18 acres west of Gator Mikes, backed up to the Moose Lodge on Santa Barbara for the site. On the back, 13 acres, we have 320 units of multifamily. The front five acres, we're working on a hotel and a medical office building. Just to give you, the council, an idea of how we've been working on this, we started this process in 2021. We first met with Nita, Ricardo, and then Rob. We had different conversations with the city, doing our first pre-app on July 12th, 2022. We did our second pre-app, January 24th, 2023. We submitted our preliminary site plan, February 27th, '23, and it was approved, October 4th, 2023. We submitted our site development plan, August 16th, 2023, and received our first round of comments on 10, on October 6th, 2023. That was the first time we heard about the caps in this process we've been working on for a couple of years. You know, for our site, between what we purchased the land for and the development costs, we're north of $5 million at this point, and the site is not feasible, financially feasible, and without the multifamily, it allows us to do the commercial upfront. Some other data points, we estimate that for the city portion of the taxes, when the entire site is done, it'll have about $500,000 to the city's annual budget from a tax standpoint. And then from a jobs standpoint, which I know the council is concerned about, our site should do about 300 construction jobs a year for the two years that it would take to build. And we think that, you know, our estimates are, if the whole 4,000 units were built, that should probably be about 4,000 man-years of construction jobs that would be in Cape Coral. So thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Scott Kemp. Go into the video at savearpines.com. Shows the city's claim about our cherished trees is not we have to remove them, but rather, we want to remove them. The benefits of our trees is spelled out by the University of Florida in that video, summarizing that they are possibly the only trees hardy enough to survive our South Florida weather, but the city doesn't give a number two. To those that fish, read, relax, and to the families, many of whom are Black and Hispanic, that have outings, listening to music, grilling, happily by the water's edge and under the protection from that, from the sun by that tree shade canopy, you don't give a number two. No clearer demonstration of the city's contempt for its citizens was shown when Connie Barron, the assigned head of this project, said to me, and I quote, "There will be some benches in this park, just not any of the memorial benches." These benches have been paid for by the individual, applied to and approved by the city for donation to J.C. Park, but did she give a number two? No. In your own ULI panel report, page 32, it states that the city must engage effectively with its citizens to build a consensus. But have you had any roundtable discussion with the park users as to how they would suggest improving J.C. Park while keeping it a community park and not turning it into a commercial attraction like you intend? I have heard of none. So let me get this straight. You want us to borrow money to cut down trees and then borrow more money to plant trees? Sounds like a sound fiscal plan to me. Then you throw in a few sail shades and a doggy shower, and then hope the peons, which is us, will be content? I don't think so. I would talk about the liability concerns and the children's deaths and injuries that have been associated with water pad usage in this country, but you don't give a number two. I would talk about the alcohol consumption and the issues that can be created by such use in a small community park, but really, you don't give a number two. A band shell that you say won't be heavily used, so then why borrow money to build it? If used frequently, then the surrounding residences will suffer from traffic and sound pollution and home value loss, but then who gives a number two? Finally, for those that oppose your changes, what we need is not a lawyer, but a forensic accountant.
Thank you.
Remember, there's a reason for the expression, always follow the money.
Thank you.
And if I've offended anybody, I don't give a number two.
Keep your hands to yourself, please. No applauding.
Hi, my name is Pat Moran. I'm here for my first visit to a town meeting in my entire life of almost 63 years. I want to thank you all for your service. I love this town. I love it. I've been here four years, and I'm staying. I don't know about the numbers. I haven't read them. I don't understand a lot of things. The decisions you people have to make are beyond my pay grade. What I'm doing is I'm working on my listening skills in life. Mr. Gunter, Mayor Gunter, you were elected with a 61%, somewhere in there. That shows us that we have a lot of faith in you. For you councilmembers who I voted for, this is a very serious topic for me. It's something very local. You can't control my inflation. You can't really control a whole lot of other costs in my life. This is a tiny way of life issue in a community. You guys have not been down there on your feet, walking, and understanding the lifestyle that is in that section of our town. It is a peaceful situation. We are all respectful. We don't need to change. We need some of you or one of you who are representing us. And again, I want to make sure that I'm not attacking any individual. I'm attacking behavior. You are representing us. We are pretty much begging for you to listen to us, for this one little snippet, this one little parcel in land. Say no for us. Table it for a year. If you have to pay a contractor a million dollars because you backed out and the court says you're in breach of a contract, I would support you paying that million dollars with my tax money versus $12 million for an affair in which you folks are not listening. And I'm going to leave early. I'm going to quote Jethro Tull. "My words but a whisper, you deafness a shout." Folks, stand up for us. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Dean Martin, an engineer for TDM Consulting. I do a lot of projects in the Cape. I'm here to talk about the cap on multifamily in the Pine Island Road District. City staff has proposed three alternatives to deal with the approaching cap. The first one is to take out the single-use multifamily like Vantage Apartments. The second is, because of annexation, to increase the cap by 35%. The third is to do away with the cap altogether. Since multifamily produces less traffic than either retail or office, and assuming the utilities are adequate, as an engineer, I would support all three options.
Richard Als from Cape Coral. I just want to implore you to, this is a great vision. Let's, if we could move it to another venue like Horton Park or somewhere, the local folks... The local folks here do not want this. It's going to destroy the character of the park. So I'm just telling you, I don't live down there, but I walk my dogs and exercise around there. The people don't want it, and it's a shame. I hope somebody out there is listening, and thank you again for your service.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Bonnie Keller. I have carefully looked at the new concept, and I noticed there was increased number of trees and the positioning of the parking. The peon currently makes the presumption that nothing bad like Ian will ever happen again, while Fort Myers Beach and all around Lee County, new construction codes are being incorporated into all buildings. Lee, J.C. Park sits right at the sea level. Approximately seven feet of water washed on to J.C. Park at the height of Ian. Maybe it won't be another Ian. Maybe it'll just be a cat three and only two feet of water rushing across. These new trees you have proposed maybe will eventually provide shade, but if a storm rolls through and rips them out, who's going to pay to replace them? And then we will have nothing. Our Australian pines, they took on Ian and kept on ticking. There is no requirement that the pines must be removed. It has been documented that exceptions have been granted by the owners, which is you, the city, and have been granted to maintain them, thereby reducing the cost to the city. The shade sails that you discuss, an interesting concept. If we were somewhere where we weren't right on the river with high winds that occur very quickly and suddenly, I wonder how long they'll last. And when the city is getting ready to lock down for a cat two, a cat three, God forbid another cat five, who's going to take all those sails down? Or will it be the locals who will literally be picking up the pieces after the storm is done? I see no reason for a bandstand, another structure to be maintained. There's currently a concert planned for next month. There's no permanent structure there, so why do we need one? If a concert can occur, why spend the money on this bandstand? We noted that the event is a BYOB, so we're going to allow liquor. Is that the kind of environment we want to establish? And if we can have temporary food trucks for this event, why do we need permanent food trucks? Permanent structures are great, but maybe they aren't always needed. Why spend the money if we can use it effectively elsewhere? I know some of you see this all-or-nothing proposition. Very little in life happens that way. Upgrades to the park, used carefully, and our money spent, shows responsibility of the city and respect to the owners. Please, no bars or bandstands, and how will we keep the curfew in the park if you have all this going on? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Marilyn Toma. I live near the park. One of the selling points of moving to this neighborhood was the park. I know one segment of society that isn't here today because they all have jobs, the young people who come there every weekend. They bring their food and they grill. I wanted to talk about the shade, but so many people have already spoken about it. I would be, it would be a tragedy, I think, to take down all those pine trees that have saved us in hurricanes. I was at the last meeting, and somebody recommended that we use the money, build a beach in North Cape, make a nice big beach like Fort Myers Beach, and then people would come there instead of Fort Myers. That's where I would like my money spent, if you're going to spend $12 million. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Hemis Snaros, 1706 Southwest Santa Barbara Place. To start, I want to address the comments made last hearing about low attendance, how you speak for the rest of Cape Coral, and how nobody stays after public discussion. I don't know about you, but my sense leads me to believe at 9:00 a.m. on a Wednesday, most people are at work or have important errands or appointments to attend to. You are all at work currently. Then you use an online survey that lacks sufficient empirical data to try and back yourselves up on decisions that you're making despite a tremendous public opposition. I know you all went to college, and I know that in order to get any degree, you need to take statistics. Does that survey look valid to you? If you would have turned it into a professor, you would have failed. You cannot assume in science without sufficient data, and you cannot assume favor if you did not give an option for opposition. It's a disservice to say you speak for the community when you deny petition at 5,000 in opposition for a flawed survey. 5,000 outweighs 1,400 assumptions, anyway. Above all, if you truly cared about the community, you would be more concerned with the long-lasting ecological effects that these changes would have on the residents, and instead would be working with conservationists and ecologists rather than development companies. The current shade cover studies and updated concept done by a landscaping company do not take into account habitat restoration, marine wildlife, soil science, carbon storage, and climate impact. While invasive trees do need to be removed, you cannot use the guise that you are doing so to benefit the environment while simultaneously removing native mangroves to put in boat slips and paving over native plant cover with concrete. We need trees and soil to help regulate already rising temperatures. Nature is not here by accident. It is an extremely delicate system with many moving parts that is more complex than adding signature trees for aesthetics. We are making too many compromises for something that cannot be compromised. Fresh air, clean water, and a sustainable and living ecosystem cannot be compromised. The park is currently being designed to be more urban than the neighborhood it is in the center of, when parks are meant to be sanctuaries in urban environments. When you commercialize a park to be an attraction, you are saying that nature in itself is not valuable or attractive. Florida is one of the most biodiverse hotspots in all of North America, and it is threatened with the leading cause being development, followed by invasive species. You are trying to right a wrong with an even wronger wrong. I ask you, what does Cape Coral look like to you in the future? Because if we continue down this path, there won't be much Florida left to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Brian Polker, residing at 714 Southwest 7th Terrace, and I know how it starts in parks. We are all together in ecosystem, not separate from nature. Our motto reflects that. Commercializing J.C. Park shows future generations that parks are not enough, that we can't go somewhere to just be, and that natural places shouldn't exist unless they're profitable. It starts in parks because parks are enough. We need parks for our well-being and to stabilize ecosystems. By our own rules, no alcohol is allowed in parks. The percentage of boats versus people in Lee County is 6.4%. Over 93% of us just want a park to be a park. This design is not for the greater Cape Coral. What will this park provide in 40 years during a climate crisis? Forty years ago, we thought Australian pine was safe. Now that Florida is fixing its mistakes, Cape Coral just wants its citizens to pay for it. If it takes five years to develop a canopy, why are we encouraging vehicle emissions to impact marine life and resident burrowing owls? This concept will undo any benefits of removing the trees in the first place. This isn't about shade. Trees provide carbon capturing systems, and we need living soil, not just pretty trees and concrete planters. Plants are not just building materials. Diverse native ground cover plants reduce soil temperatures without the need for shade. Concrete removes functional soil, and once we lose soil, we lose the ability to grow healthy ecosystems. Mangroves are the most efficient carbon capturing system on the entire planet. Restoring the coastline with a bar and docks is unbelievably corrupt. Let's do something better for the environment, not worse. Turn this park back into a functioning ecosystem and plant more mangroves and protect the ones that are there. The Australian pine management plan will provide examples of restoration. In 1997, the Lake Worth Lagoon System Restoration Project provided for the removal of Australian pine and the restoration of coastal plant communities. It's now home to a diverse assemblage of native plants and animals. At Tortugas National Park in 1995, the National Park Service developed a management plan to remove Australian pines and restore the island to its pre-settlement conditions. Where is the restoration in this concept? This is coercion. You want citizens to pay for a commercial venture that benefits the wealthy and powerful. Restoration is not your opportunity to drink wine. It's to regain one sliver of life in a collapsing biosphere. If you remove the invasive trees, plant only native trees, and abandon this grandiose fairy tale idea of paradise, because paradise was in front of us this whole time, and we kill it every single day. The leading cause of biodiversity loss is development. Our voices don't fall on deaf ears. Instead, they are well-understood by people who do not seem to care. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. It started in parks. Let's not end it there.
Thank you.
So a few years back, we voted in a go-bond for the Parks Department. Lake Mead has, Lake Mead has no lake, but there are piles and piles of dirt that have sat there for two years now. But let's go ahead and start a whole new project over here at J.C. Park that has no problems whatsoever. When you talk about an invasive species, the danger is that invasive species move and gobble up land on their way. Those Australian pines have not moved for more than 10 years. They're not invading anything. They're just sitting there making shade. And I agree with everyone else here that says you're not going to have shade for five to 10 years, and you're not going to have the kind of shade that you have with those Australian pines. The yacht club needs to be fixed. All of that work has stopped for intensive purposes that I can see. Why are we not worried about that? Why do we have to keep march? We are the invasive species here, not the Australian pine.
Good morning. I'm Anne Burchtoll from Cape Coral. Last meeting, Dan Shepherd went on to give us a wonderful rendition of how Australian pines are invasive, and by spreading their seeds literally all over the city, it was quite a remarkable rendition. But what I did was, Mr. Shepherd, the Honorable Mr. Shepherd, it prompted me to go home and get on my computer and look at what an invasive species is and talk about those Australian pines. And I found that Key West, Fort Zachary State Park, actually preserves their Australian pines, because one of the things that they noted was that in hurricanes, and guess what? Key West is going to be the brunt of them, it protects their city. They landlocked and protect that coastline there, and they have found ways to manage the invasive feature of those plants. Also, a two-mile stretch through Gulf Stream lined with Australian pines planted, wait for it, in the 1920s, has been declared a state landmark. They, too, have found ways to manage the invasive nature of the trees. These communities all look at how to manage their environment, not destroy it and pull it apart. Delray Beach petitioned to actually stop, yes, stop, redeveloping Atlantic Dunes Park and were granted permission, and they, too, had Australian pines. All of these communities, and I'm sure I can find a few more, have found ways to manage an invasive species, not just simply to rip it out. And all of these places have benefited because the Australian pines protected the waterfront, gave shade, and buffeted some of those communities in hurricane times. We're going to lose more than we gain here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy Lopez, Beach Parkway. J.C. Park was donated to the county and sold for $10 to the city of Cape Coral, with the proviso that it be a public park for the purpose of recreation, not commercial use. Cape Coral got a bargain in this park, which was voted Cape Coral's number-one-most-loved park by the city residents. So leave it alone, save the money, let our residents enjoy nature. Even Peroni stated it was the most well-used park in this city. J.C. Park already fulfills all the requirements of the proviso. We have three shelters that are constantly rented with waiting list of a month or two to reserve a space. Peroni's plan will only add one more shelter to this list. We have a beautiful natural park with parking along the lovely shoreline, most spots with its own grill picnic table, so that families, especially those with smaller homes, can get together for large family gatherings with an unobstructed view of the river right from its banks. These areas offer plenty of natural shade under the Australian pine trees. The tree's deep roots provide unique protection from erosion from Hurricane Irma, Ian, and Idalia. If the city feels they need to remove them, do them one at a time, as each tree will be reaching its lifespan over the next 10 years. We would thus plant a small tree as one of the pines dies, providing the sapling time to mature and provide real shade. This would save the taxpayers a lot of money. According to the Florida Department of Natural Resources, if the Australian pine trees prove useful, which ours do, the city can get an exemption from their removal. Peroni's plan would denude our park entirely, leaving it empty in the summer's average 94-degree heat. Shade sails and umbrellas will only become flying missiles and disappear during hurricanes. The plan would also provide less picnic areas and unduly impacting the less affluent in our city who have their family gatherings there every single weekend. It would provide less walking areas for those of us that walk daily in this park. And we already have interlocking paths. Peroni's plan would make a concrete walk with concrete walls and seats that are not only hot in our temperatures, but when seated, you get an unobstructed view of the other concrete wall from the other side. After Ian, all of us regular park users saw the 11- to 15-foot concrete bulkhead that washed ashore from across Fort Myers. Concrete does not stand up to our hurricanes. Peroni's plans don't include our memorial benches, which were paid for by our residents, our memorials to those who loved and utilized this park, and they provide plenty of sitting areas for our visitors to come. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor, councilpeople, friends and neighbors. My name is Tony Karp. I'm representing the Cornwallis neighborhood area. I remember you, Mr. Mayor, when you used to come to our meetings, the CNA meetings. Thank you for being present, listening to us during that time. Now, I'm asking you and all your council members to listen to all my family right here, what they're requesting, and what we're requesting is to leave J.C. Park the way it originally is. Now, there's some things that can be improved there. We can save a lot of money, and I know that we can do something with that northern feel to make it more compatible with the whole park. I think what, one of the assets of J.C. Park is when you pull in, there's an abundance of parking. You get that feeling. You see the trees. You see the water right away, and it feels natural. It's a peaceful sanctuary for all of us. And if you look at the demographic in the area, it's like 90% seniors. You have educated people that have worked all their life. They work hard to get a peace of mind. Their families come to visit. They use the park. It's a simple lifestyle there. All this change is going to create a lot of confusion, a new adaptation, and it's just going to make it, you know, you see how these people, you know, they love what they have right now. You know, we can save this money and apply it in a better way, Mayor. And I just want to let you, coming into the parking lot, there's an abundance of parking right there. You can go to the south or the north. There's all these beautiful carports. It's like a little private sanctuary for anybody and everybody that comes. They bring their coffee. They have these picnic benches there. You have the trees providing the shade. It's just a comfortable environment. Me, a first responder for 30 years, there's veterans there that I talk to. It helps with the PTSD, you know, that post, you know, syndrome that we have from our job. And we're going to lose that. And, you know, with all this hype, you know, with the stage, with loud music, we have all eight on 47 Terrace right now. You know, I don't know how often you all get out there, but you should go there on the weekend. There's young families celebrating baptisms. There's birthday parties. There's ample parking, and the traffic flows beautifully. I never see a traffic problem because you have the carports, they have excessive parking, and it just works harmoniously with the park. And then if there's like a slight overflow, then you can pull over to the side, and people can unload their coolers, they can set up in the pavilions. You know, I've seen AA meetings there, and people feel, it draws you, it's magnet, it draws you there. You want to be there. Why change that? Leave it as it is. Take care of these people, for your citizens. We've worked all our life. We deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Carleen Brenna. I'm a master naturalist certified by the, what am I saying, University of Florida. Sorry, I'm so nervous. This is such an important thing to me because we need that park desperately, and as a back park and... and also a birding area. And I talked to experts on eagles and the pine trees, and they said, "If we were to create some structure in those trees, the eagles would return because they've lost so many trees." And we need to make this a birding area also. We need to have a place for the scrub jays. Unfortunately, because they interfere with development, the city's pretty much wiped out any of the scrub oaks in the city area. And one area that had over 400 scrub oaks in the North Cape was sold off quickly to a developer who burned it all, 400 trees. I would like to recommend the trees that are planted be scrub oaks and bring back the scrub jays and make this a major area for the, for birders and for the community. Also, I'd like to recommend that if we did a structure like they did at the mound house in Fort Myers Beach and create a deck area across the whole front of the Bay Area, not only would it be a place for children and the elderly to be able to fish, but underneath it'd be a major area, protective area for sea life. They did that at the mound house, it did happen. It'd be a wonderful place in the community for everybody to go. And with 400 canals, we don't have a decent place for children or the community to fish. And it wouldn't interfere with the park. And then if we turned it into an area and replant all the scrub oaks, we could have an unbelievable birding area here, and it'd bring in birders from all over the world. I just feel this is a, we need it as a park, not as a place for entertainment, we're in desperate need of having someplace that this community can really just continue to love. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Ellen Hoferhoff. The updated concept for J.C. Park shows more shade trees and a few less parking spaces. But that is not enough. We still are left with less green space, more concrete, and commercial businesses like food trucks, Bistroin Bar, as well as a permanent benchell in a residential housing area. This will result in issues with noise, traffic jams, and increased involvement of law enforcement, more expenses to ensure safety in the park, alcohol consumption next to a playground. That's not sound like a reasonable idea. I live in a condo building at the north end of the park, which could mean that in the future, I will have a parking lot, restrooms, and a benchell in front of my windows. J.C. Park has served as a neighborhood park for recreational purposes for many years. The city should not borrow $12 million to transform the park into something most people reject. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Linda Seather. I've spoken to you before, as many of these people have. And before I say anything, I wish those two in the back, the two young people talking about the environment, would be up there with you because I think they could really make a difference. One of the, yes. It amazes me, and I know it, a lot of people are wondering what motivates you to continue this program in spite of all the opposition you have. You have 5,000 signatures. We come here constantly. I've never, I've been here since the 90s, and I have never been to a meeting before these last few meetings about the park. Like, what is your motivation? Why are you doing this? Why do you want to go against the people's wills, the people that put you where you are? So that's just a question that I know you can't answer now, but we would like to know. Why are you doing this? You haven't finished the yacht club? We're still waiting to see that. You haven't finished the project by the river, by the bridge that's going to have food trucks? Do you even know that food trucks will be in vogue five years from now when your trees have grown up? You know, food trucks are not the healthiest and the best thing in the world to have, you know, access to 24/7. So that might not be a good idea either. But along with everyone who has spoken about the trees and the environment, I agree on all of that. But I'm also a resident living very close. I'm at the north side. I don't want a parking lot in front of my windows. I don't want a bathroom in front of my windows, and I don't want a bandstand there. It is not fair. We bought these apartments so we would come and live in a place that is peaceful and beautiful. We bought access to the park, and now it's not the park that we initially came to. I was in the park this morning. None of you were there. I met a lot of these people there. I see them every single day. I never see you. It is not fair to us, and we are the ones who have elected you, at least some of us have elected you. But it's just not fair. And I really think it's time that you step back. You would save so much money just stepping back, improving the park, taking away those rotten logs that are laying around, fixing the grass a little bit. It's mainly weeds and not grass. And we could have such a lush, beautiful environment with flowers and trees, and we don't need splash pads. Kids should learn to entertain themselves in nature and not in slippery splash pads. Splash pad, I can't talk anymore. But you get the message. And please, please, listen, you don't need to spend this money. We don't have to be in debt. We can just enjoy the environment that is already there. Just take care of it. Thank you, thank you. I'll be back, I'm sure. Take care.
Thank you.
Good morning, council and mayor. And I want to say, I moved here 15 years ago because I saw that Cape Coral is a well-run city. It still is. We have a stellar police, fire, emergency services, front office. The maintenance crews you have here are amazing, friendly, helpful. We have a great town. It's a great town. Let's keep it that way. We're asking for one little thing, a little adjustment on a park that is already a good park. That's all we're asking for. Let's make that happen. You know, we're not here, I work at 73 years old, I have my own business still, and I'm here today. I don't come every week, I don't nag anybody. We got a great city. Let's take some time to think about a small thing we're asking for here, really. We don't want the trucks. We just don't want them there. It's going to create litter and so forth, et cetera. You've heard it, but you've also heard it's a great city. And I moved here from Colorado. Yes, Colorado, I moved here on my own. So keep that in mind. I want to keep it that way. You want me to go back to Colorado? I don't want to, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for allowing me to talk to you again. I've been in this podium at every single meeting, so some of you probably might recognize me. I'm not going to go into the same old spiel on the trees because I gave that a lot the last time. I want to thank the lady that mentioned the beach because I was the person that proposed that at the last meeting. And it was nice to see that someone was listening to me because a large beach for Cape Coral would be awesome for our community, awesome for taxes, and awesome for tourism. You don't need to spend all that money on our little park that we spend every day in. It's our, it's our way of life. We spend hours, mornings and evenings. That's where we get our tranquil, quiet time. I don't want a food truck. I'm from the generation that called them roach wagons. You won't see me spending one nickel at any of those food trucks. I live a block away. Why on earth would I want to go spend money at a food truck? Why do we want to put a concrete barrier up that if we do have a major hurricane, it's going to come up over the top and pull it right back out into the river? And then what? How many millions do we have to spend again to replace it? Those trees and rocks allow the natural flow of the water but stop the progression of the water with speed. It causes less damage. And when the water recedes, it recedes right now. It's not trapped by the wall to go back out again. It goes down immediately. You need to start taking care of our city everywhere else where you're ignoring it. Drive down Del Prado. Look at the islands on Del Prado. There are still dead trees, signs down, not a bit of mulch. It looks like crap when you're driving. New people coming into the city, driving down Del Prado, that's what they're looking at. They're not making a little version to come over to our park and complain because we have trees. Yesterday, I met a couple that came from North Fort Myers. And I was watching them as I was walking my dog, and they were going by every one of the really huge trees, and they were taking pictures in front of them. And I walked up to them, and I said, "What are you doing?" And they said, "Oh, I'm here visiting from Massachusetts. This is my brother-in-law, he lives in North Fort Myers. And he brought me here to see these beautiful trees, and I'm taking the pictures home." We already have a destination to look at our trees, the ones you want to tear down. People see them as beautiful. You guys see them as garbage. I don't get it. It's Mother Nature. And I also came from Colorado. But you keep doing this, I'm going back. Because at least there, you wouldn't dare touch a park or a nature area there. You'd have people up in arms. You're lucky that most of us are too old for that here. We want to enjoy our life, we want to have peace. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Georgine Walsh. I no longer live on the Cape, but I lived on Beach Parkway for 41 years. I was their president at one time. And I'm listening to this, this is so heartfelt because all the work that I've done there to make it this way, and now here, these people are newer and appreciating all the work that the fathers and mothers of that neighborhood made it happen. I had to come when I saw this. I was emotionally affected by it. I don't know any of you. I knew all the city council people. And for years, because we worked together on that, we were the model neighborhood of Cape Coral for years. I only moved because I had cancer, and I had to be with my daughter on the other side. Otherwise, coming back here, nostalgia, unbelievable. This was my home, I love it. So I'm here representing all these people that want to remain. And this is like deja vu for me because I've been up here before for the same reason that they're here years ago. The city had decided they were going to do something there, too. I know that the Cape probably is looking for more money to come in here, but you know, there's, in that area now, it's more older people. Take a look. Retired, some of them still working if they can, it's wonderful. But they're there for the peace and the quiet and what it presents. And as far as the hurricanes, I've been through five here. I was through five hurricanes there. I mean, there might have been two and three, but this was the worst. And when they talk about these Australian pine trees, they've been there since I've been and before. Can you imagine? So that says one thing about it. I know that they were brought in for erosion reasons, and some places they still have it, as they, and these people have researched and found that out in Florida. So maybe money should be spent. These are older. If you want something that sounds like what you're doing, first off, there's a lot of rock down there. I sailed, boated there. That's going to have to be moved if you're going to put docks and stuff in there because it's not going to, it's going to be difficult because it's shallow and it's all coral.
Thank you.
Coral, okay? So keep it in mind.
The gentleman in the light blue shirt will be the last speaker. It's 10:03 now, and that's even taken it over, like, no, sir, you'll be the last speaker.
Good morning. My name is Carol A. Hearn, and we've been homeowners here since 2009. I vote in every election. I have voted for many of you guys. And we are also raising our young granddaughter. We spend a lot of time at J.C. Park. She loves to climb the trees. I would hesitate to bring her with the new planned so-called improvements. We don't need a splash pad, we don't need boat ramps, we don't need food trucks, we could use new grills, maybe spiff up the pavilions a little bit. There are things that can be improved. But what we really don't want is to make this Miami. We want to live here because it's peaceful, it's calm, we have green spaces, and so many experts and young people have said things much more eloquently than me. But I think I speak for the average person who goes to the park. We love it the way it is, maybe a little improvements, but nothing what you're talking about. And you don't need to spend that money. It's crazy. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Steve Willie. I'm originally from Omaha, Nebraska. I've been coming down here, excuse me, about 20 years. About five years ago, we decided to get something down here, we looked for a condo. And the drive down Beach Parkway was beautiful. And it went to this park. My wife saw that area, and we moved in across the street five years ago and became Florida The way I see it, Beach Parkway is nothing more than a long driveway. I understand there's about 850 condos that have only be accessed from Beach Parkway? It's not a thoroughfare, number one. I think that we can, they say negative impact on traffic, and I just don't see that happening. I'm going to switch gears now on the impetus of what's driving this project. It's my understanding, early on, it was said that some consultant to the city said that they needed more waterfront recreational facilities. And that's why they're picking on Beach Parkway, because it's got next to the river. That's your phase two, as I understand it. But yet you're putting phase one, you're doing phase one, you're doing the park and then hope you get the permits and can build the river access that's driving this all together? I don't quite understand that. I attended the public hearing and spoke with just about everybody there from the city, a lot of parks and Recreation Department and one city council member. I asked a lot of questions, I looked at the exhibits, and it seemed to me that everything was, I couldn't believe how many different answers I got. Nobody was on the same page. So there's a lot of confusion. You know, some of those questions were, are the food trucks going to be permanent? What's the whole idea of a food truck? It's mobile. They go where the crowd's at, not the way, it's not the other way around. I've yet ever hear anybody say, "Let's get in the boat and go find a food truck." And now you folks, this quiet park, you guys seem to want to make it into a commercial endeavor. I've heard comparisons to the yacht club. The yacht club doesn't have food trucks outside, doesn't even have a bandshell, plays its music inside. And yet you guys want to take this quiet park in the middle of demographics, out of those 850 condos, and all the people that live in those condos, most of us are older than 55. We're not going to play volleyball. Might like a pickleball court. But I think this council, I would ask the council to get a step back and take another look at this. And from a business point, it just does not work. You're trying to commercialize the park.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
My name's George Putnam. So I have a question. Of all you folks that are sitting there, how many of you live within one radius mile of J.C. Park? Raise your hand, please. So none of you will experience the impact of what you're proposing on the citizens who live around J.C. Park? So my next question is, excuse me, how many of you have visited the park as a person or a family, not on official duty, to J.C. Park going to last six months? Please raise your hand. Thank you. So what we see here is you're trying to impose your will on a community that doesn't want that to happen on several, for several reasons. So have you consulted with the Fire Department and Rescue Service? Have you consulted with the Police Department? Have you consulted with the police department with regard to what might be required or needed as these events unroll? Those are just questions and done speaking. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, citizens' input is now closed. Is there any council discussion on citizens' input? I know we're going to be having that discussion here next, so for me personally, I'll wait to weigh on that particular topic once we get to it. I do want to thank everybody for coming out this morning and giving your opinion on this particular topic. And I know staff and other council members will probably have a discussion here when we get to the topic next. Councilmember Cummings?
Yeah, I'm talking to the council. Sharing how you feel, and I do appreciate it. Also, if you would please just stick around, I know that we're going to be talking about this next, kind of see what the proposed plan is. If you would mind, we'd really appreciate that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item 4B is discussion. B1 is JC Park update concept plan. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple weeks ago, we presented the JC Park original concept. Staff was tasked with going back and taking in the input and the consensus from that discussion to revise the concept. The plan today is to present the output of that revised concept, look for concurrence, and move forward from there.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Connie Behren, Assistant City Manager. I want to thank everyone around the area for coming, showing up, providing your input at the previous meetings, and then also providing your input today. We did take that input and develop the updated concept plan. I know it may not include everything that the residents may have asked for, but it did include many of the common themes that we were hearing, both at our open house and then also from the online survey. But I just wanted to give a brief recap of how we got to where we are today. Back in March of last year, the city issued an RFP for design services for JC Park improvements. In May, we selected Panoni Associates to provide those design, engineering, and permitting services. Before we negotiated a contract with Panoni, we did work with them to develop a concept, an initial concept to bring to council for feedback. That initial concept was presented to city council at your winter retreat in January with positive feedback. Based on that, the city staff then negotiated a contract with Panoni and then brought that contract to the city council in May for approval. City council approved the consent agenda item in the contract pending public involvement activities. City staff then conducted two public involvement activities. The first was the open house at Mercola and Marker, where we had 217 participants show up. We then conducted the online community survey, seeking feedback and input on the various amenities, and also providing for an area where someone can make open comments. There were almost 1,500 participants. So, based on the feedback that we received from the open house and then also from the online survey, we did present to council back in September at the committee, the whole, the results of those different public involvement activities. The resulting action step from that meeting is that we would go back with Panoni, take the feedback that we received, and take into account the concerns and comments that we had heard, and come back with an updated concept. And that is where we are today. We said at that time, it would take about two weeks to develop the updated concept. The feedback items that we had mentioned previously that we were going to consider in the updated concept, the one thing that we heard very clearly was there was more, more, more shade and other shade options as well. There were concerns about the north parking lot. We also heard that there was a desire for additional seating options and that accessibility to the waterfront by the physically challenged was a concern. And then additional items such as the grills, bike racks, EV charging stations, and dog cooling options. So, we looked at those considerations, talked with Panoni, and then they developed the This was the original concept that we developed and presented to council. This is the updated concept. And I think that immediately from the eye test, you can see that there's a significant number of additional trees included in this concept. So, what did we do? We shifted the north parking lot and also the south parking lot to the west. As you can see up there, in the original concept, the turnaround was all the way at the east end of the property of the JC Park, both on the south end and the north end. We now have shifted that end so that that turnaround can be a drop-off point as well. And we shifted that into where it's behind the band shell in the north and then over farther west in the south. What that enabled us to do with that open area that we've created by shifting the parking lot over is we can create some optional, some of that optional shades that has been requested. This would be a shade sail covered seating area. We did that both in the north and also in the south end. And just for the record, whenever storms come, and that we have shade sails around here, too, we remove the shade sails from the fixtures, from the structures. Yeah, I'm sorry, somebody's talking behind me. We added shade trees along the shoreline. Those trees will be native trees, for example, buttonwoods, maybe some red mangroves. Those will be planted there along the shoreline. As you can see, when you compare it to the previous, the concept, the, there are no trees at that point. It was just an open view. We also added shade trees within the walking path itself. Over where the seat walls are in the original plan, we were able to add trees along there and then farther south on the walkway as well. The reason that we can do that is because the walking paths are wider in those particular sections. They narrow down, as you can see as you go around there, but they narrow down, but at that particular point, they're about 20 feet wide. So, that does give us the opportunity to plant trees right in the middle there that will provide shade. We also added more shade trees to the interior. We still managed to maintain the green space. I know that we've heard folks say that the plan was removing, they wanted open green space, but when you look even at the original concept, you can see that there's clearly significant open green space in the north lawn and the south lawn. We still maintain some significant open green space, but we have now populated those areas with some shade trees. And then when you look at the overall concept, there are basically three areas along the coast where there's still open view. One of them is right up there near the band shell, there's a little break right there. And then, of course, where the overlook area is, that's still open. And then down in the south area where the bistro piazza area is, there's that open view So, how did we address the issues that we had presented to us? Well, the updated concept, as we said, we have shifted the parking in the north lot and also in the south lot to the west. That is resulting in a loss of 12 parking spaces on both ends, or a net loss of 24. So, that brings us to 132. Now, currently, there are 77 parking spaces. The original concept had added about 156, made it 156 total. Now, with that loss of 24, that brings us down to 132. The accessibility to the waterfront boardwalk, now we have that drop-off turnaround area where if someone has physically challenged, you can go to that turnaround area, drop them off there. We'll also have parking on the east end of both the north and south parking lots. But then that gives them access to the shaded now, the shade sail area, as well as access to the walkway. More shade trees. The original concept proposed adding 305 trees. The new concept adds 425 trees. And we're still able to maintain the view that we had talked about originally, where you're coming in off of Beach Parkway, and you can still see straight out and you can see the river. So, we've been able to maintain that view. I mentioned again that the shade sail covered seating has been added to both ends, and then we have added some grills. Bike racks will be there as well as some dog cooling options. The EV charging station, that will still, that kind of remains to be determined on whether or not that's something that we do want to add. It's something that we'll have to talk about, see if that's something council wants to add, based on our conversations previously about electric vehicles. This shows you what the shade sail seating concept provides. There's the shade sails, there's benches underneath those shade sails, which could be the memorial benches. We've also had trees there, that's not, they're providing additional shade as well. And again, one of the things that was asked for was additional shade options. So, this is one of the different shade options, other than just trees. This is a new view of the south lawn in the overlook concept. You now have trees on both sides, to the left, to the right, and then over on the waterway straight ahead of those trees. But you still have the view of the outlook itself. This is what the shaded pathway, the shaded walkways can look like. We're looking at putting trees right down the middle, and as you see, there's also tree, shade trees now over in that lawn area that previously did not have any at all. So, now, if you're walking along there in the morning, you can walk on either side of the trees, depending on what type of view you're looking to achieve. So, it's going to be in that area, it will also be in the south seat wall, because as you can see up there, just to the left, that's that seat wall that you have seen in the video before. But there's also one similar to that on the other end of the overlook area, and then farther south. And so, we're looking to put quite a few shades there in that area, shade trees. And there, you can't, you have to look really close, but right there to the left of the whole image, there's a image there of someone grilling. So, we will be adding some grills to some of the pavilions. And just, and also for the record, there are six pavilions there. There are three current, and we will be providing six. The dog cooling options, we have the dog drinking area, the drinking bowl. We'll probably have a couple of those throughout the park, just because we'll have people who are running, and they will do the ones that have the bottle fillers, because those folks will want to be filling up their water there. But then it also provides an area there where Fido can have some, drink some water as well. And then we had showed the misting stations once before, so we'll probably have a location for one of those there within the park. We did a shade study and looked at the current canopy cover for the Australian pines located there. And also the, not just them, but all the shade canopy. So, with the Australian pines, you can see that, everyone knows that they are predominantly along the shoreline, that they make up most of the shade there. But when you also take a look at the interior of the park, there also are Australian pines located in those sections there on the north end, and then you have Australian pines located in those various sections on the south end. So, it's pretty clear that those trees have spread to the interior of the park. Now, the total canopy there is 141,000 square feet, and that is 3.24 acres. I'm not sure where the 6.48 acres came from that one speaker mentioned, but it's 3.24. So, with the current canopy, 141,000, 3.24 acres, the existing shade tree cover that is there, that has been identified by our landscape consultant for potential inclusion into the new design, there are 96 trees. That equates to 60,000 square feet, or 1.38 acres. All of these shade trees are non-invasive. The remainder of the existing tree canopy, or the 81,000-plus square feet, 1.86 acres, that's comprised mostly of invasive Australian pines, both along the shoreline and then what has spread into the interior of the park. So, basically, less than half of the current tree canopy in JC Park consists of the non-invasive desirable shade trees. The initial concept that we provided to city council, where it provides 305 new shade trees added to the existing shade trees, or bringing to the total over 70,000 total square feet of tree shade. The proposed pavilions, the six pavilions, plus the shade sails for the play areas, because we will have shade sails over the playground as well as the splash pad, that adds about 12,000. So, a total of 82,000, I believe it's 82,000 square feet there. That was 1.9 acres. The new concept, where we're doing, adding 425 new trees, brings the tree shade to about 76,000 square feet, plus the additional covered area with the shade sails, another 15. So, that brings it to 91,000 total square feet. This is on day one, this is at the day of installation. So, that's 2.1 acres of shade provided. So, we have heard previously, not as much today, but previously, that it would be 15, 10, you know, 10, 15, 20 years before anyone would see the benefit of these shade trees. But we asked the consultant to take a look and just give us a, we wanted to see what it was in five years, because that seems a little more of a reasonable timeframe to look at. So, in five years, that tree shade component will be over 140,000 square feet. The structures would stay the same, but now that brings us to over 155,000 square feet of total shade provided within five years. And that's 3.6 acres of shade provided, which is more than the current 3.24 acres. And I do want to point out, too, that it doesn't, that the trees don't stay the same height for four years and then all of a sudden jump up to 140,000 square feet. If you just look at the halfway point, if you're looking at 80,000 square feet, in two years, if it goes 40,000 square feet, then you've got over 100,000 square feet of tree shade. So, it's going to, it's a gradual increase, but it is an increase nonetheless. But by the five years, it's going to be more than what is out there right now. So, when we look at that, we do the comparison for the current shade at the day of installation. As we mentioned before, again, 141,000 square feet, 3.24 acres. The non-invasive shade trees, I want to report again, is 96, and they consist of the, like I said, the non-invasive, 60,000 square feet. The remaining is the, mostly the invasive Australian pines, and most of those do provide what I call one-way shade. And that is from the east. All of those pine trees along the shoreline provide the shade coming up when the sun is rising. They don't provide any shade value in the afternoon and as the sun does, the sun does its arch over the park. With the updated concept, we'll have 91,000 square feet, 2.1 at installation. We'll add 425 new trees. And on day one, this is 0.72 acres more than the existing non-invasive shade tree canopy. And the tree canopy is going to be distributed throughout the park and along the locations, along the shoreline. And most of these are going to be providing what I consider is multi-directional shade. And none of these quantities that we're talking about today include the sails that will probably be at the band shell, that will probably provide shade there, as well as any shade that's going to be provided by the seating at the bistro piazza area where the food truck is, food trucks are. So, that shade is not even considered here. And then at the five years post-installation, we're looking at the trees and the actual canopy cover being 155,496 square feet. And of that, 140,000 of it is provided by shade, by trees. So, in five years, what we're going to see is a significant shade availability throughout the park, and it will exceed the current coverage. And again, most of those shade trees will provide multi-directional shade. So, that was the information that we were able to obtain when we did the shade study that was requested. So, basically, the next steps, what we've done with the updated concept is we've increased the number of trees from 305 to 425, or a 40% increase. Shade trees have been added to the shoreline, the interior of the park, and also along portions of the walkway. Trees are going to be providing shade throughout the day. Trees are going to be providing shade throughout the day, throughout the park, and JC Park is going to have a very impressive tree canopy within five years. We've added covered seating areas with the shade sails on both the north and south end. We've reduced the parking impact in the north and south ends of the park as well. We've improved the handicapped access to the walkways and provided, as well as the new seating areas, and we've added some of the requested amenities. So our next steps would be to approve the resolution that's on council agenda for October 18th, to begin the design of the updated concept, and then at the 30% design, as we've mentioned previously, that we will be scheduling another open house for the public to bring forward the updated design. So if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What we'll do is, I'll open it up for council for any discussion. Councilmember Cummings.
Yes, hi. Connie, if you wouldn't mind explaining, what kind of trees are we looking at putting there in JC Park?
New trees, they will all be non-invasive trees. For example, buttonwoods might be planted along the, as I said, along the shoreline, or the red mangroves. Within the interior, we can, we may have oak trees, we may have, I'm trying to think the different ones, red maples. There are a variety of trees, and we'll be more specific about that once we begin the design on it. And some of the trees, some of them are going to be what you consider code trees, so they'll be 10 to 15 feet tall, but then we've also got 70, we have 75 in there that are marked up, that will be then the 20 to 25-foot height, because we do want to have some larger trees in there.
Okay, so you're going to do a mixture immediately?
Yes, yes.
So you're going to have some real big ones, and then some smaller ones?
Right.
But in five years, they'll all be nice and big?
Yes, yes, it will create a canopy, yes.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Welsh?
Thank you. I'm looking at the updated concept and seeing some of the pavilions. Are the numbers, they're 10-foot by 10-foot pavilions? Is that what the 10 by 10 means, or are they going to be bigger than that?
There are three of each. There's three 10 by 10s and three 18 by, 18, I turned, 18 by 18, they're in there, I can't remember what the number was.
Yeah, my concern is the size is 10 by 10, it's going to be too small. I mean, I've got a 10 by 10 that I can throw up in my backyard, and it's only going to hold maybe two people underneath it, so. For that being a meeting area or anything like that, I would like to see some larger pavilions in the parks, and then that can maybe hold 10 to 15 people, because, like I said, if I, if I want to put a 10 by 10 up, I can fit that on my postage stamp lot that I have. I don't go to a park to, to play in a 10 by 10, so. I'd like to see some bigger pavilions.
Okay.
I'm looking at the bottom of this concept, are you saying the food trucks are going to go around the piazza, or the plaza, or the?
I'm sorry, what?
The food trucks are going to be going around the piazza?
Yes.
Is what we're calling it now?
Right. And they are, I'm not sure why, the individual, the residents said they couldn't get a correct answer, but they've always been designed to be permanent, not mobile. That's why, that's why we'll be providing water, sewer, and electric hookups there for them, so that, so they don't have to come in and run generators.
If there wasn't a food truck there, what are we looking at? Is it going to be just water and electric hookup, or is there still going to be seating and areas like that? Because I mean, it's, it's not like they're permanent food trucks, they'll be coming and going. So I'm kind of just curious as, I know the piazza's going to be permanent, but it's not, what, what are we going to be seeing around? Is that all going to be concrete, shaded?
Yes, in the concept, it does show that there are trees throughout that area.
And then the access for the food trucks to drive in?
Yes, but again, they're going to be, they're not going to be mobile, they're not going to leave every day or every few days. It is a, they are designed to be permanent, so they will have some sort of a long-term lease, and when I say long-term, I mean probably an annual lease, so that if, let's say they get a food truck in there that nobody likes, or that they're not performing to the standard that we think that they should be performing, then they would be replaced by another vendor.
So I'm, I'm looking at this concept, and then I'm seeing seven, room for seven food trucks, is that what this is?
There's only going to be three. I mean, I'm sorry, six.
Six.
Three on each side.
Okay, I'm just looking at the drawing, and I'm seeing seven, so I would, I would consider if we're going to do the piazza, then maybe reduce the amount of food trucks to maybe three, instead of six, knowing the area. Or not have the piazza and have the six food trucks, because I think it's a little bit of an overkill on that part of the park. And like I said, I would like to see some bigger pavilions, because to me, a 10 by 10 pavilion is, is too small. I would rather see six of them at like 10 by 30, or even a 20 by 30. I look at another park in Fort Myers, like Blake's Park. A lot of that has larger pavilions for larger gatherings, and that's what I'd like to see in this park. Thank you.
Councilmember Cosby?
Thank you, Mayor. I think that's a good point, council member. I'm glad you brought that up. I agree, actually, bigger pavilions. But I have a broader level question. You talked about the timeline, and you talked about how next week would be approving the design for the updated concept, right?
To, to begin the design services, yes.
What happens after that? What's the next step?
Well, the next step is we'll come back at the 30% design, to look at them and see, make sure that they are proceeding in the manner that we were expecting them to proceed. So we want, we want to see that they're doing exactly what it is that we're asking them to do.
And then what happens after that? Could you lead me to the end?
Well, the process, as my understanding, is we'll get different, different levels of design, you know, I think, can't remember exactly what they are, Mike would know those better, 30, 60, 90, something like that, and then.
So, so the idea is similar to what we did with the Gobon Parks. We bring an initial concept, get feedback from the community and the council, revise that, that's where we're at today. Council approves the concept by resolution, and then we, we authorize the design consultant to begin design. They submit 30, 60, 90, and a final. We get all the way till the end of design. At that point, we make a determination on whether or not we want to bid that, or we want to table it until a future date, but at that point, we have a shovel-ready design project.
Okay, thank you.
So we can make decisions at that point to slow down, advance funding, seek alternate funding from the state.
That answers my question, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Steinecke?
Thank you. First, thank you for obtaining the shade study. It was important to me, I asked for it, and I think it tells a lot. One of the things that I want to make sure that is recognized is that, that the shade produced by the trees on the shoreline currently, and, and you could quibble about what time it is, but typically from noon, 1 o'clock on, the majority of that shade is, is accessible in the water, it's not providing benefit on the land. I, I believe, from the shade study and, and from what we see in front of us, that by having the, the usability, the walking paths on the east side of the trees, will actually have more usable shade for walking and exercise and, and everything else. So I think the positioning of where the shade is being created actually enhances the ability to use the park more hours during the day by, by the public. So I, I appreciate the placement of the trees, I appreciate the, the movement of the, of the roundabouts, you know, from the, from the parking areas, so that additional shade can be placed by the water there as well, and pulling those back away from, from the condominium units, both at the north and the south end. I would agree that, with my fellow council members, that the pavilions need to be larger. Typically, the reason why people come to the park to use a pavilion like that typically is for a birthday party, or for a gathering, a family picnic, and, and I would agree that under, if you use a 10 by 10 tent, that many of us have is pop-ups, you can't put a whole lot underneath that. So I would agree that the pavilions would need to be bigger, and I am glad that there is an increased number of them than we, than we currently have. And, and I would just share, and for those that are here, and those that are listening in via TV or however else, I mean, this is the time for us to communicate about this together. We can't talk about this together outside of this meeting, but each one of us have individual meetings with, with the city manager's office, sharing our thoughts, if you will, in isolation until we can be in a, in a meeting like this. So these are the first times that I've heard anyone else talk about these issues from, from the council. But what I would share is that when I have been with city, that city manager's office, I've, I've relayed what I believe to be true, that whatever amenities we bring to the park, they need to be to enhance those people that want to come to a park, to be an amenity for them, not to be an attraction itself. And so, you know, for, for me, to take my grandkids to the park, and to be able to get a beverage while we're there, I'd like that. That may not be what everybody would like, but certainly if I'm going to be there for an hour or two, for, for there to be an accessibility of food and beverage, rather than me having to bring a cooler and put it in the trunk of my car, or whatever, that's, that would be an amenity to me. And so to have things that will service the public that goes to a park as a park, I still think the focus should be that it is a park, not as an attraction. And so, you know, that we've, and I appreciate all that came out today, and speaking against commercialization and, and whatnot, I guess definitions will vary, but I would certainly be opposed to making it a commercialized park, but I, but I'm not in opposition to there being other services available to our people that come to a park to be a park. And there's, and there's many other, you know, instances where the object of going somewhere is not the amen, an amenity there to serve the person that goes, but there as a convenience for those that go for the, the true purpose. So I think if the pavilion sizes are increased, and the numbers are kept where they are, which is a greater ability to use pavilions there, I think that, I think that is good. I've always been glad that if there are, if we're going to offer, you know, food options, that, that they would be permanent, that they wouldn't be need for generator, or what are we going to do with our gray water, or, or any of that. So I believe if that's, that we'd be approaching it the right way there. But I would, but I would, and I, and I'd also absolutely, at least my vote, would be that we maintain the park with park hours, not with hours that would accommodate any amenity that's, that's at the park. So if the reason to be the park is to be there among nature, then we need to be there when, when the sun is up, you know, not in the dark, when the view isn't available, and so I would, I would believe that we need to keep park hours as park hours. And the last thing I would share is, is that there's been conversation around whether there should be a permanent, and we've called it a number of things, amphitheater, band shell, whatever it is.
It's a band shell.
Whatever you want to call it. There currently is a group that comes to the park to play music, and there's a place for them to do that, that is covered. Their instruments, in case of rain, would be protected, they're protected, they're in the shade, artificial shade. But I believe to enhance the ability to do that is a great thing. I think to have the Hollywood Bowl there, you know, is overkill, so the size of that matters to me. So I'll, I'll be very interested in the dimensions of that, and actually how much room that it takes up. But to accommodate those that currently go there, to accommodate some of the, we've actually gotten some feedback from school kids that would like a place for them to go, and, and to, and to, you know, play their guitars, and, and whether it be sing, or, or play, whatever. I think it should be a place for them to do that, too. So we have it now, this would be a better one, but I wouldn't want it to be overkill, you know, for sure. And I think that's kind of where I sit on it right now.
Thank you. We agree.
Okay. Any other council discussion? Councilmember Hayden?
Yeah. Connie, just to weigh in, I don't know that I've changed from where I was before. Bigger pavilions, I think, will be important, and if that's the case.
Could you hold on a minute, Councilmember Hayden? I apologize for interrupting you. Gentleman kneeling in the chairs there in the middle of the?
Yeah.
Those seats are made to sit.
I'm sitting.
It doesn't appear, so you either sit, or you have to go to the back of the room. You can choose.
I'm sitting.
And face forward.
I don't want to face.
Well, then I'm going to ask you to leave, so you can either face forward or leave.
We're not going to answer any more questions.
Officer, could you remove that individual from the council chambers?
Whoa. That's a bad, bad, bad.
We'll take a 10-minute break while the officers remove that gentleman. All right, we're going to call the meeting back to order. Please, please have a seat. Councilmember Hayden, I believe you had the floor, so we'll give the floor back.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. As I was saying, I don't know that I've changed my opinion on this from the previous things I've said, other than increasing the size of the pavilions, which I think is important. Here's the point with me, I've, I've listened to all of you. I just, I disagree with you on this one. I may agree with you on other things, but as far as this park is concerned, and the enhancements that are coming to it, I like them. I do not, I, I have not changed, I do not like the idea of serving alcohol there, I have not changed on that. I like the boardwalk, I like the splash pad, I like the band shell. Connie, what I do want to ask you about, and you mentioned it under the shade structures, and we've had this conversation about the memorial benches staying
Right.
in the park.
Right.
Has any of that changed, other than possibly giving people the option of doing memorial bricks, putting the, the benches around the bricks, putting the benches under the trees? With the addition of the trees, how does this impact those benches?
There are different options, and we've talked about that. I know you and I have had some discussions about it. Right now, we have an area designated in there for a memorial walkway. We do have, I'm trying to remember the number, 16, something, 15, 16 memorial benches. We could potentially place those benches somewhere in the park. They don't, they don't have to go away. The question becomes whether or not those who have those benches there would prefer the option of having a brick in a memorial walkway, or some other sort of remembrance in a memorial walkway. So that, that's still under consideration, and that can be discussed with those who have the benches, as to what their preference might be.
Okay, so they could still have that option. My next question is, since there seems to be consensus with council about increasing the size of the pavilions, and if they're big, or how that might impact where they're at in the particular park in relationship to trees, or what might be near. Having this on the consent agenda next week, is, is that too soon? If you get consensus from increasing the size of pavilions, is that going to impact possibly what we may vote on next week?
No, what we would do is, if you vote on it next week, that would be part of the new updated concept design. We would ask Pinone to incorporate larger pavilions into the upcoming, that's why, that's why you come back at the 30% and take a look and see if that's what, they've done what you've wanted them to do. So we'll just ask them that to increase the size of those other three pavilions.
Thanks. And just for the people that are still here, and I wish more would have stayed, but, but my turn. We, I saw the petitions, I've listened to you, I always do. You know, I'm not ignoring what you say, and you, you know, you can shake your head, that's fine. But that's not what I believe. You know, I believe in this park, I believe in what it means to the community, and I believe in the enhancements that are coming to it, and hopefully we'll move, move forward with it, and I hope all of you that are in disagreement with it will at least give it a chance. Give it a chance, see how it works. See how it works, my turn. See how it works, and don't push it aside before you see something that I think, I believe in the future will be of benefit to our community. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Shepard?
Yes, I want to start off by answering some of the questions of, considering this is our job, we work for you, but that's absolutely correct.
Here, here.
That's here.
When I, when I ran for office, one of the biggest topics was, were water wonderland, but a lot of the people that live in the city can't enjoy the water. I mean, I had so many citizens approach me, add more places where the citizens can enjoy the water. And then, as you know, we, we tried, we made a new design for the yacht club to make the Beach Beggars, so more people can appreciate that. A show of hands, how many are for the improvements at the yacht club? Okay. A lot of people want the improvements at the yacht club. And that, and that's, and that's the same thing with a lot of citizens in our city, they're for the improvements at J.C. Park, because they want more activities along the water. So, we are doing our job, we're listening to the citizens that we represent, and they say we want more waterfront activities. The other problem that we're dealing with is none of us like change. I live near Cape Harbor, and when I sat here as a citizen, when the idea, the developer wanted to build Cape Harbor, and people said, "It's going to create traffic, it's going to ruin our neighborhood, it's going to lower our values, we're not going to see the sunrise, the sunset." Everybody in my neighborhood wants a golf cart now, because they all, they all go to Cape Harbor, and they love it, they enjoy it, but there was the fear of change. And I'm not saying that we're all going to be happy with every change. My myself, I'm not going to be happy with every single decision with J.C. Park, because we all have different things that we want. But what we have to learn to do is embrace change in our city, and all get involved, so we have input, so we all get a little something. So, that's how I look at it. I've been there, I've raised six children here, I've been to J.C. Park tons of times in the last 20-something years. It has, it has shade from the morning till noon. After that, the sun, the sun moves, and the park is in pretty much full sun the rest of the day. The new, the new plan, we're getting bigger trees, larger trees, more trees, there's going to be shade in both directions. So, we're improving shade, so what do we do? We listen to the public, they wanted more shade, they want it to be peaceful. You've heard council members say, "We don't want this to be a place for concerts, we don't want some really big, huge," I forget the different terminology for the band area.
Amphitheater.
What we wanted to do was wanted to improve on people that go there, play the guitar, school kids that want to go there and show their talents to the people that live here. We want to improve on them things. What you also heard from another council person is, we can't all sit around and talk about these plans, we're not allowed. By law, we can't talk about any, any of this to each other, except for right here. We all want the same thing, we all want to improve our city. But the process is, the idea has to be brought forward, so we can talk about it. To be attacked for even talking about it makes no sense, because we are responding to what the public asked for. So, we, we implemented moving forward, the process of talking about it, and that's what we're doing. In the process, we found out what a lot of you don't like, and what you don't want, and we listened, and we, we've altered things. So, I'm, I believe, because of my use with my children, that we need bigger structures for people to have parties, and little family events, and things like that, because that's our job, we want to make it better for the community. And I think that's a great idea, that we make some, at least some of them, maybe not all of them, but a couple of them larger. I love the idea that we're adding bigger trees now, it's not going to be the twigs that are just 10 to 12 foot tall, we're getting some 20 to 25 foot trees, and a good amount of them. I also like that we're removing invasives, because another one of our jobs is controlling spending, which a lot of you say, "Don't waste our tax dollars." Well, we're spending millions of dollars a year mowing down trees in the city from the seeds, traveling around the city, and these Australian pines growing everywhere, where your tax dollars are used to remove them. So, we have to protect your tax dollars, and make sure we're not being wasteful. So, it's a tough decision. I can tell you that we went through this with Cape Harbor, Tarpon's Point, the yacht club. When we talked about the yacht club, we had a show of hands in here, that the majority are all for the improvements at the yacht club. But you know what, the people that live there aren't for the improvements. So, this is, you know, people, what it boils down to me, we don't, none of us like change around our homes, I get it, I understand it. But we all have to learn that we're not going to stop change, the best thing to do is get involved, and make sure we get a little something that we want. And I think that our city staff has done everything they can to get everybody involved, to make sure we listen to everyone, if there's anything we're missing, I mean, there's even, we're even putting things in for our pets, I mean, I think we're covering all the bases. When you say that there's a lot of us that don't want it, I can honestly tell you, I mean, I live here in the city, I go shopping, I go to Publix, I'm at the Circle K, I'm all over, and I get approached by citizens all the time, and the majority of them are telling me they love the idea of what we're doing at J.C. Park.
Please keep your comments to yourself. We were respectful when you spoke, we expect the same in return.
So, maybe they're not as emotional about it, because they don't live right there like you guys. I get it, you know? But what I'm telling you is, we represent everyone, we have to listen to everyone, and we hopefully have to come up with the best answer for everyone. So, thank you.
Okay, for me on this topic, first off, Councilmember Stanky, the survey with the shade survey, I think, was very helpful, so I appreciate you asking for that, because it, it did, for me, anyway, it made it kind of crystal clear where we are, what we are proposing. And actually, there's not a reduction in shade, there's actually going to be more shade from day one, so I appreciate that analogy that staff provided, because it was helpful for me. Additionally, I kind of agree with Councilmember Welsh, what he said with the, with the pavilions, you know, I would like to see all of the pavilions, the larger sizes, only because I think it will be a popular amenity to be utilized. And like I heard from one of my other colleagues, the 10 by 10 tents, you get about three, four people underneath there at best. So, the larger shade structures, I think, would be a benefit. One of the concerns that, in our one-on-one meetings that I had with staff this week, was the, a concern with the parking, losing 24 spaces. And like I explained, the staff is, once we decide exactly what the design is, then I think we can, we'll be able to determine what the adequate parking need will be for that particular park. So, I think that we need to, you know, keep an open mind, I know, you know, we went, I think, up to 156 parking spots, we lost 24 with this new design. One thing I don't want to create, like I explained to staff, once this is completed, I don't want to have a parking issue down there from day one. I don't want, I don't want to hear residents calling us complaining, because they're parking up and down Beach Parkway, they're parking in the condo parking lots. So, parking is extremely important to me, to make sure it's adequate for the facility and the amenity. Additionally, I spoke last night at an event, and I know I've said this in the past, I'll say it again, 2018, we asked our residents to go and vote for a Parks Go Bond. I think it's our responsibility, first and foremost, is to fulfill our obligations with the 2018 Parks Go Bond. Now, with that being said, I don't mind being proactive, and coming up with a design for J.C. Park, but for me, we have to make sure that we fulfill the other obligations first. I'm not interested in taking a second bite of the apple, until we completely chew the first bite of the apple. And I think that's extremely important. We know that because of the economy and economic times we find ourselves in, there's going to be overage in the 2018 Parks Go Bond. I want to make sure that we fulfill that obligation first. And then you look at the yacht club. You know, the yacht club has morphed into a larger project than anticipated, partly to blame because of the hurricane. We don't know how much that's going to cost us, we don't know how we're going to pay for it yet. So, those answers I need first, before I can support moving forward with J.C. Park. I'm not saying we can't do a design and plan the future, but we have to take care of what we agreed to first, for me, before we move forward. So, I know this is going to be probably at least a year-long process, with the design coming back at the 30 and the 60%. In the meantime, I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful that the other parks that we haven't started, Tropicana Park, Crystal Lake, Festival Park, the yacht club, we got to get a good grasp on what we're doing there, how much it's going to cost us, and how much we're going to pay for it, before I can vote to support any other park improvements. That's just where I'm at in the process. So, if J.C. Park is brought back before those parks are clarified and identified as far as cost, then my vote's a no. But I want to make sure that everyone understands that I support improvements at the park. Right now, today, for me, it's not the time, we have to take care of the other parks first. So, that's my position on it. I think I've said that from day one, and I'll continue to say that. Councilmember Cummings?
Yeah, I'm in agreement, I just had a meeting with our city manager, our city attorney, and I pretty much was saying the same thing about our other parks. So, I'm definitely in agreement on, we need to start fulfilling what we've promised, and really focus on, I even brought up Northwest, that we need to start completing a lot of the other parks that we have promised. So, I'm glad you brought that up. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other discussions, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is 4B2 Pine Island Road District Comprehensive Plan Discussion. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is, we're going to continue...
Give it a couple of minutes.
Ready?
Yes.
We had originally scheduled this a couple of meetings ago at a COW. We began to have the discussion at a city council meeting, and it was apparent that we needed some more time and some additional information. I met with each of you and asked you if there was any other information, or facts, or ideas that you had, in order to help us come to a decision on where we want to go with the Pine Island Road District. And we have a presentation today that kind of summarizes all those pieces of information that were requested, as well as reviews what we had. And the goal for today, for us, success would look like consensus given to staff on how to proceed and move forward, so that we can continue to communicate with the business industry and the landowners, looking to develop along Pine Island Road, on what solutions are in the works, and what will or will not be available to them as a way of development. Thank you.
Good morning, for the record, Wyatt Daltry, playing Team Coordinator Cities, and I'm stand here for, I'm here to present you this, this presentation for Pine Island Road caps. Thank you for your attention on this. Just to go over some points that we've discussed already, Pine Island Road District was established in 2002, roughly 2,600 acres, its primary east-west commercial corridor in Cape Coral has access to Pine Island to the west, I-75 to the east. When this was created in 2002, and unique among our land use classifications, Pine Island Road District has development caps, has a range of caps that was established to satisfy the then state plant, Land Planning Agency in 2002. The one that's going to be of direct concern as part of this presentation is residential caps, which max out at 5,030. Current stance with the development caps, which we're getting close to that 5,030 number, we are notifying owners and developers of development caps and use restrictions. Developers actively seeking tax abatements for mixed use are impacted. No permits have been issued for units over the cap, so we're not there yet. All cap issues, however, are in the permitting process, and/or identified in pre-application stages. I'll get into further detail about what we're really looking for as far as potential changes to development cap. Should we reach that 5,030 number, we will be unable to issue development permits for residential construction. Reason for that is, it's part of the comprehensive plan, we cannot willingly violate our comprehensive plan. Because communities must be consistent with the comprehensive plan, that's state law. Forcing developments to cease moving forward at this stage, however, could lead to potential legal exposure. There are, however, options to address this issue. These options, very, very summarized here, very broadly summarized, include removing the existing residential developments from the PRRD, increasing residential development caps in the PRRD through a text amendment to the comprehensive plan, and other possible changes to the comp plan. To be more specific, option one, removing residential land from the PRRD, there's a couple thousand residential units that could be removed from the Pine Island Road District. These include Sandoval, multifamily developments, pure multifamily developments, such as the one south of Racetrack, which we call Vantage, remanding the area north of Diplomat Parkway from PRRD to another mixed-use designation could remove some potential units from counting. Moving forward with this option, however, would require future land use map amendments and rezones. And because Senate Bill 250 restricts city-initiated amendments, this would require privately-initiated requests by property owners or their representatives. The city could cover application notice fees. So, my point being that for option one, we're not the only party here. Normally, if Senate Bill 250 didn't exist, we would just move forward and make land use changes, using the city's police power. With 250, our hands are tied a little bit, so we have to work with the property owners, if we wish to engage in this option. This has the Pine Island Road District multifamily projects, this is the western half, there are several in process. I'm going to get to the four that really matter, however, as it pertains to this option. These are the eastern multifamily projects, so you can see, there's probably about 15 to 18 total. I'll get back to this chart once I go through the four properties that we're looking at, but this kind of depicts where we are today. Currently, there are 2,577 units within the Pine Island Road District. There are another 1,230 that are approved, but not yet constructed, and if you add those two, we have 1,200 or so units under the cap. But it's the units that are, that are in projects under review where we go past that cap, it's 4,808. Those projects, by and large, were started within the last 12 to 15 months. This is a relatively recent situation that has, that has occurred. So, we're looking at a number 16, excuse me, 8,615, which would be over 3,500, nearly 3,600 units over the cap. How are we, how are we going to address that? We could remove, and I'll go through these projects and then get back to this table, we could remove Pine Island West, sometimes referred to as Gilbane. There are 640 residential units within this project that could be removed. Some commercial development is anticipated, that's a part that has frontage on Pine Island Road. We didn't, we, we would intend to retain that in the Pine Island Road District, but the area south of that... but the area south of that, perhaps change that to either a mixed use or multifamily future land use. And we also add the cost of the application fees and the noticing fees. It comes out at about $5,500. Sandoval, as we know, and historically, the idea when the Pine Island Road District was established in 2002 was that the northern half of Sandoval was going to have a more commercial or mixed-use character. Well, that never occurred, and we know that just through the development patterns that have occurred. Primarily single-family, you have a multifamily complex at the northern end. So there's about 600 single-family residential units and another 186 multifamily that could be removed. Our recommendation would be to remove this from the Pine Island Road District to single-family residential for the single-family components and multifamily residential for the area to the north. Estimated cost of that change, $10,750. Moving east, actually almost to the eastern end of the Pine Island Road District, Victory Park. There are approximately 530 residential units within the Pine Island Road District that could be removed. Additional non-residential uses are under consideration. Our recommendation would be to do a future land use map amendment to a mixed-use future land use. This would actually create, we'd consider creating a new mixed-use designation as this area looks to have more commercial than is customary for the mixed use that we see, higher FARs, for example, which, if we're going to be doing a text amendment for the development caps, we can also simultaneously make a change and create a new mixed-use future land use designation. Estimated cost for application noticing fees, about $8,500. And then finally, the Vantage multifamily development. This is just south of the Racetrack in the Judd Creek area. It's in the Pine Island Road District, so it's in the purple, but is wholly a multifamily product. So changing that would remove the units from the Pine Island Road District, but wouldn't affect or remove any existing uses or abilities within the Pine Island Road District from this, because after all, it's multifamily. So removing those four projects, we move from the 8,615. We remove Pine Island West, 640 units, Sandoval, 786, Vantage, 292, Victory Park, 530. And then as part of the text amendment changes that we're preparing to make, we'd be including vertical integrated multifamily as a use we'd like to see in the Pine Island Road District, and therefore would not count that against our residential caps. With all that removed, the number drops to 6,111, which is still above the cap but has removed significantly, if you want to call it, the worst-case scenario as far as the units above the cap. I'll get into the other options as to how we will address that increase over the cap, which would be to amend the development cap table. There's a good rationale, frankly, for doing this. Since 2002, the Pine Island Road District was expanded by 15% due to annexations of county properties and amending other areas that were in Cape Coral to the Pine Island Road District. In addition, segments of Pine Island Road between Burnstall Road and Chiquita Boulevard was widened from two to four lanes. And lastly, centralized utilities are available to the entire district, which was not the case in 2002. So between those three factors, the capacity exists, frankly, to add more units within the Pine Island Road District. It's logical to do that. Staff has proposed a minimum cap beyond the 15% that resulted in land use change to 35%, taking into account the fact that utilities are available and the widening of Pine Island Road. This would require a text amendment to the comprehensive plan. However, because we're increasing the scope of development, permitting more development, it's not subject to Senate Bill 250. So it's relaxing the restrictions for future development. What we'd essentially do, this is using the 35% increase as an example, we'd be changing that development cap table and increasing everything in there by 35%. Retail, office, warehouse, hotels, residential units. The maximum number of units in this, using the 35%, 6,791. So that would get you above that number I presented before to you that had the 6,100 number where we were removing certain projects but still being over the cap. This would get you, this would work and be able to absorb those units and still be consistent with our comprehensive plan and give us a little bit of wiggle room. But there's really three numbers that we've looked at when we've been reviewing this. I would consider a high, a low, and a medium option. One is the total number of units with projects under review, approved projects, those existing residential in Pine Island Road District. That number, and actually, I will apologize because the numbers were changing, is 8,615. That is the high number there. It's roughly a 71% increase. There's a staff, the medium example, if you wish. The 35% increase, 6,791. And then if we remove all those residential projects identified in option one and the vertically integrated multifamily from being part of the cap, that gets us to 6,111, 21% increase. The top number, the big number, the 8,615, that is the one that would remove the city from potential legal exposure. If we were to go with that number, we also would not need to make any changes to the future land use map by removing residential projects from the Pine Island Road District. So that's, it's a big number. It tends to be fairly clean, though. 35%, like I mentioned, it's a medium number. It's one that, just again, due to the increase in land in the Pine Island Road District, utilities and widening of the road, it's a number we can definitely, actually, all of these numbers we really defend with the state. But then if you're concerned about too much residential in the Pine Island Road District and looking at what we've been reviewing, 6,111 would be the low number. That, however, assumes that all those developments that we had identified in option one, that the owners want to play ball with us. So that's just, want to give you fair warning that that's assuming that they want to make these changes be removed from the Pine Island Road District, which they very well may, but I can't give you 100% certainty that they will. Option three is to remove caps, not the residential cap. As Pine Island Road District is a principal east-west corridor, we can revise this to remove any potential impediments in the future to things like the commercial, the office, the hotel units. So using option three, we'd remove all those. I'm pretty certain we'd all be very happy if we somehow had 10 or 15 million square feet of retail space in the Pine Island Road District. Current caps had it somewhere at 4.5 million. So I think we'd be very happy with that. We don't want to see any impediments to that happening if that was to happen. Residential caps, as I mentioned, would remain, and they'd be changed to whatever number council wishes for us to put into the text amendment. Senate Bill 250 is non-issue, as, again, this would relax restrictions to the comprehensive plan. Furthermore, as part of this option, and I alluded to this before, vertically integrated mixed use would be permitted within the Pine Island Road District and not counted against the residential cap, by which we define that by a minimum of one or two stories of active retail or office use. We're not looking at things like a token Starbucks into a large multi-story building and calling it mixed use. We're not talking about a parking deck and calling that mixed use. We're talking about true active retail and office that helps removes those deficiencies we currently have within Cape Coral and those products. If we were to move forward with option three, basically, this table gets removed. The residential units number gets changed to the maximum number that you'd like to see. And then option four, which is the status quo number, that's an option council can move forward with. There are some things you should be aware of. We would reject all permits seeking multifamily in the Pine Island Road District once the cap is reached. We would reject and advise all pre-application projects of restriction of residential uses. This would preserve remaining land in the Pine Island Road District for non-residential uses. Potential legal exposure would exist, though, particularly among those projects that have already submitted a request for a site plan or a site development. Actually, I'm going to move real quickly, and I mentioned this sooner. Regarding the text amendment, which would be parts of, I don't know why they make this difficult. Anyway, text amendment, if we were to make these changes regarding the development cap, developing a text amendment, one month to six weeks. We could make this happen fairly quickly. Looking at a P&amp;Z mid-November 2023 date, it'd be a special hearing. We'd have to reach out to make that happen, but I think it's very likely that we could do that. Where are we to do that? Intro to you guys to council late November 2023 with a council transmittal hearing to the state and regional agencies in early December, either the 6th or the 13th, both are regular meetings. So it's really at your desire which one we hold that at. State and regional agency review, they take 30 to 45 days, whereupon they kick it back to us. We make whatever changes are necessary and can bring this back to you for final adoption in mid-February. So we're talking about four months from right now, if we can get direction today. Basically, I have the template ready to go. I can provide the city attorney's office with a draft of this text amendment tomorrow. But I just wanted to let you know this is something that's been cooking for a little while. We can get this done really quickly. All right. So that little interlude aside, our recommendation is to approve, looks like this is still referring to that. Our recommendation is approve options one, two, and three. So removing identified areas in option one from the Pine Island Road District while also initiating a text amendment to adjust the residential cap based on your guidance with the proviso, if you do go with the large number, the 8,615, we would not need to do option one unless you wish us to do that. I would tell you, though, option one takes longer. There are going to be separate land use map amendments. Probably takes us six to eight months to complete them. But anyhow, so option one, unless we're going with the large number from option two. Option two with a text amendment, and then option three, removing all other caps, aside from the residential cap, from the Pine Island Road District. That's our recommendation to you, and I'll stand by for any questions.
Real quick, Wyatt, before I turn it over to council for discussion, could you explain a little bit more detail with vertical integration? My understanding in your presentation that there's no caps on that? And I know I'd had a discussion with the city manager during our one-on-one meetings. If we decided to go down a path, would we put a cap or would not put a cap on it? What I see in your presentation, there's no caps for that.
Staff's recommendation is that there's no cap. However, if council wishes to apply a cap on vertically integrated multifamily, of course, we'll do that.
Okay. All right. With that being said, I'll open up for discussion for anyone. I mean, I guess I can go first real quickly since there's no lights on. You know, for me, I guess, you know, the ultimate, the question is, what's the goal here? And how can we get to that goal? And as we can see, you know, we can kind of slice this apple many ways to get to a possible goal. You know, for me, I think that it's easier to come up with a number as far as the cap if we want to expand it. You know, you look at these four parcels, or not parcels, but these four developments throughout that area. You know, we can come up with 6,111 units if we do away with some of those out of the Pine Island Road District. But what we got to keep in mind, that has to be voluntary. They have to be willing to do that. So if we kind of set the premise that, okay, we're going to take these four communities out of the Pine Island Road District, but they elect not to do that, then those amount of numbers that is reflective to that particular community or project, we won't have that then. So is it easier just to say, okay, we want to, like we did early on, we put a cap? Do we just want to change that number? I think that's what we need to ask ourselves. When you look at the 35% based on the 5,030 units that you have there now, that's about 1,761 units. That'll get you to the 6,791 unit if you went with that methodology. If you add the four projects that are within that Pine Island Road District now, you're at the 6,111. And then you have the other option of any type of vertical integration, where maybe the first two floors is, you know, residential or office space, and then anything above that, which I could support that to some degree. I don't think it should be open-ended like staff had mentioned, you know, because I think that may cause some additional issues down the road. But I would surely, you know, try to promote that type of development with a certain amount of a cap for any type of vertical integration as well. So with that being said, you know, for me, if I could do either the 6,111 or the 6,791 with some vertical integration concept as well and set the cap at some point, I don't know what that is. Collectively, I guess as a council, we could come up with that. So for arguments, you know, if you approved the 6,111 and then you did vertical integration and we put a thousand-unit cap on it, then that puts you up at 71. I'm not saying they're the hard numbers, but some type of methodology like that, that'll even get us higher than the 6,791 if you had that type of an approach. I wouldn't support all three, but I think there's pieces of each one of them that we can peel out and come up with something to raise the caps. We already know because of annexation, roadway improvements, not to include the roadway improvement that we funded for Pine Island Road that we're moving forward, we know that probably additional development will be able to be completed in that area because of the road improvements. So I don't have a problem. I just think that we just pick the cap, whatever that cap should be, and move forward in that fashion. Then you don't have to worry about, does a community want to voluntarily change their zoning? Because if they don't, you're going to lose that amount of residential units in that particular community. I just see that as a possible contentious discussion. So for me, if we're going to raise the cap, let's just raise it, come up to a point where we're comfortable with it and move forward in that fashion. So that's my position on it. Councilmember Steinkie.
Thank you, Mayor. A quick question on slide number 13. If I'm reading this right, where that red line goes across, what we're saying is that the land north of that red line remains in the Pine Island District, and the area beneath the red is what would be removed?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I was clear on that. For me to be comfortable, my feeling is the number we end up with needs to come from the rationale that we apply to why we would do something. I don't think we should pick a number that satisfies something and then let's seek the rationale to make that number make sense. That's just me. And so when I think about the number should follow the rationale, then I go to the rationale as the primary thing that I'm looking at is why would we do whatever we would do in the change? So I'm fully supportive of removing, and I just call them doors, removing the doors that aren't, you know, physically on the Pine Island corridor, if you will. So especially, you know, the Sandoval, the Victory Park, Vantage, those, they're not really on the corridor, if you will. So from a rationale of let's remove those because they don't make sense as being part of the corridor, 100% agree with that. The other two projects that are in there, to some degree, I could take leave removing them or not. But unless it's right on the Pine Island corridor, I have no problem with removing those, and that then adds numbers. I absolutely agree that since we annex properties and there's a greater land mass, then from the standpoint of, you know, percentages go, if one number changes, the other number should change then. And so as we work with that 35% number, there's a reason for the 35%. There's rationale before the number is determined. So I absolutely agree with that. And... And on the, on the, as far as limits on vertical integration, I've always been a proponent of mixed use. I didn't think the city used mixed use enough to begin with. We see a lot of mixed use now coming. That's awesome. It allows us to have both commercial and the opportunity for homes that are more affordable by having the homes above the commercial. We serve two purposes that way. So as far as putting limits on vertical integration, if that, if those residential units are coming above commercial, we've still accomplished our commercial objective. So since we already have density requirements, you know, density restrictions, if you will, we have height restrictions, if they want more residential above the commercial, well then the commercial footprint has to be bigger. If there's more residential units, they're going to have to have more parking. If they have more parking and there's height restrictions, well, then they took out one level of residential because they need more parking there above their, above their commercial. So I, it's not that I would necessarily oppose any limits on vertical integration, but I think, I think that may be an animal that kind of takes care of itself already based on how dense we can be in that given footprint and how tall the building can be in the first place. So I could go either way on the vertical integration, but definitely, I'd like to have the rationale come first instead of just pick a number, and now how do we figure out how to make that number work? And I think we've got plenty of good rationale that gets us pretty close to the number of where we currently stand right now, and then those that were late to the table, relate to the table. That's where I am on it.
Councilmember Welsh.
Yeah, I think I've already given my position on this pretty clear to management and clear to this council, the two or three times we've talked about this now. The only thing that's different this time is, you know, what if these voluntary people don't want to come out of the Pine Island Road District? Well, then we're still going to have, we're not going to gain those extra spaces. I completely agree with most of us up here that the ones that aren't necessarily touching Pine Island Road need to be removed, but if they don't want to be removed, is that our fault? No. So do we have to raise a limit from, let's say, 20% to 40%, just because someone doesn't want to be removed and we don't have the power to remove them, thanks to the Senate bill? So I kind of agree with the option 1, 2, 3. I like removing, like I've always said, the ones that aren't necessarily touching Pine Island Road. I don't see a reason to increase the cap any higher than the land that we've annexed in. I think that is a very rational increase, and, you know, if, kind of exactly what I said last time. My position really hasn't changed on that. Thank you.
So just to clarify, Councilmember Welsh, what you're saying is the four communities that staff outlined, which brought in an additional 1,081 residential units, would take that cap to 6,111. Is that what you agree as far as the cap?
Yeah, the four there is fine, and then increasing the cap based on the land that has been annexed in.
So what you're saying is do the 6,111, and then do the 35% on the 5,030, which is 1,762 units? So then that's going to get you up to about 6,900 units or so? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that would be fine.
Okay. Councilmember Long.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so I've had many discussions with staff about this, and I think, while I appreciate what they're trying to do with the 35% and then removing some of these options, I think at the end of the day, the end result is the same. And the end result in this case is that we have the same exact amount of units that are brought on. So whether they're brought on as a result of that 35% increase, in addition to the reduction through the methods under option 1, the end result is the same. So for me, to contemplate moving forward in some fashion or another by raising the cap to a number that staff meticulously went forward in calculating, while contemplating the removal of all three of these in option A, my understanding is it's going to take longer, and then if one of them in the, in the option A, in particular Sandoval, which is the largest nut that we would be removing under that, decides not to do that because it is voluntary, then we're coming back here, back to the drawing board and increasing that cap again. We're having another discussion again, and again, the end result is exactly the same. So my recommendation, which I think is where the mayor was heading, was to find that number, which would basically be moving forward when removing all the options that were proposed without contemplating further units in Sandoval, because that's an if, and it takes time, if takes time. And then whatever that number is, in addition to those that are already in the queue, set the cap at that number, approve that cap, push it through, and then it's all done and over with in one swipe, rather than going through, doing all these different options, removing all these things. We can allow those to take place, but we're not going to contemplate for those as being linchpins to getting to the number that we've already set when we cap, when we raised the cap to 35%. I hope I've made that semi-clear. I'm not going to get into the numbers here, but if you're in, you're in. Minus us doing the math, expecting Sandoval to come out, raise that cap to whatever that is, minus Sandoval and allow the others in option 1 that staff's recommended to be removed. So we're talking about the annexed property in Pine Island West, talking about Vantage, Coral Grove, and Victory Park. Does that summarize those individual pieces?
Yeah, so your option is to go, as opposed to move 20 parts, get the number we need, raise the cap, and then that's the timeline. That's basically option 4 that Wyatt said, or with that text amendment, that he could just, we could have it done by February.
Right. So instead of simultaneously moving forward and backward in an effort to pad the stats, the end result is the same, so let's just move forward with increasing the cap based on the number of units that are already in the queue.
Can you touch on your thoughts? Because if we do that text, the other thing that we've been mentioning is the vertical integration.
I'm okay with staff's recommendation on the vertical integration. I don't think we're at a point now where we need to address a cap on that. I don't see it spreading too fastly. I think it's my understanding, we can always address that later on if that's an issue, but for now, I think in order to promote that, I don't think, especially if we're going to be closing the door on some developments, that we simultaneously don't allow them an escape point. I would leave that as it is, as staff recommended at this time.
So I'm clear, Councilmember Long. If we're going to go with that type of a methodology, that approach, and I think this is something that staff is looking for, what's your cap number then?
It would be whatever the math lines up to, whatever the, so...
For all three of their options?
Correct, minus assuming that Sandoval's going to voluntarily...
I'm hoping that staff can give us that number.
My understanding, they have that number.
Yeah.
Or very, something very close to it.
So my understanding then is you're in favor of raising the cap from 5,030 to 8,615 just across the board?
That's correct, with the understanding from everyone up here that we would be doing that anyways, we're just not doing it all as addition because we would be removing these proposed units. No matter what, that's the amount we're going to be out of the ground, no matter what, that's the, that's the way, whether we go with staff's recommendation, or whether we just flat-out eat it and say 8,600. The number is hard to swallow, but I'm of the understanding that no matter what, that's the number. Does that make sense? Because the proposal is, we get to the cap by removing X, Y, and Z projects.
Yeah, 1,081 extra residential.
Those projects are still moving forward, and we're still going to have them, so that's going to take more time, more effort from staff, and the end result is going to be the same. So just move forward and...
Just to summarize, so the discussions we have is, if you were to set a geo-fence, we call it, and say, on the ground in the Pine Island Road area, how many units would there be, regardless of how we got there, that number would be 8,615 if we let everybody that's in the door right now going through permits and build, construct. What Councilmember Long and I and staff discussed is, well, that geo-fence area is not changing. All we're doing is, would be changing the comp plan designations within that same area. So no matter what assignment they have for comp plan, there's still going to be 8,615 in that area. We're just moving a lot of pieces to get to that number.
Right, we're putting different outfits on it. So to use the mayor's term, we're slicing the apple differently, but the apple, mass of the apple is still the same.
Okay. Councilmember Hayden.
Yeah, I don't know if the apple's still the same in locking in on a number without having, Sandoval's built out. I think the discussion's probably goes pretty well with that one. Victory Park is its own community development district. So to me, you're looking at two projects there that probably, if I was a betting person, probably can be, probably can be removed based on those discussions, and I don't think those discussions would take very, would take very long. Locking in on a number now, I think, Mayor, you said at the beginning, taking parts of all three options, I think provides the flexibility in what we need. We know there's a project out there now where vertical integration comes into play, which will be important for that particular project, in my opinion. I guess my other concern is, it took 20 years for us to get to this problem, based on when the ordinance was passed in 2000, or 21 years in 2002, when the cap was established. It sounds like the intention with this council is, is we deal with the 8,615 that might be in the pipeline, and then if there's any other possible mixed-use projects that come to Pine Island Road, they're out. So my concern with setting a cap number is, 20 years from now, when council is, or probably sooner than that, is back in on this, and the cap's being discussed again, and I'm not sure what legally we can do now to say, all right, you know, no, I think we get into some real legal issues here, if, okay, we're going to set a cap number. We can't exceed, we can't exceed that cap number. 10 years from now, we're at the cap number. All right. Same discussions going on again, same options being proposed. Do we look at a 35% increase? You know, so getting, to me, getting locked in to the number right now, to me, doesn't make, isn't the right maneuver, I don't think, at this point. I think we have to deal with what we have, and then look at, all right, what's this district going to look like in 20 years? As, you know, I have, you know, we need to preserve our commercial space. I'm not arguing that. But as more mixed-use projects may want to come through the pipeline, how does that impact that if it includes residential units and vertical integration? We have a cap number, are they removed? So I think getting back to where I was at the beginning of this, taking parts of 1, 2, and 3, having those discussions with those four developments that can be removed, I'm pretty confident that two of them, Victory Park and Sandoval, which is 1,200, a little over, about 1,300 units, will probably be in a position where they can be removed from that. So I'm not focused on a number. I'm focused on using options 1, 2, and 3, and how we get to, and how we get to that number, and then what does our future look like for that Pine Island Road 20 years from now? Thanks.
I'll go to Councilmember Cosin, since she hasn't spoken, then I'll come back to you, Councilmember Welsh.
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quick, I support staff's recommendation, 1, 2, and 3, with the 35% increase. Thank you.
Councilmember Welsh.
Yeah, I think some of my concern with just increasing the cap number and not removing some of the properties is, what happens in 10 years from now if Sandoval wants to remove themselves? And then we have this giant cap number because we kept them in it at this time, and that allows more multifamily on the Pine Island Road District. So I think just raising the number up to the, to get to that final number, 30, 40% or 50%, doesn't help us in the future if those already-built residential areas remove themselves from the district. So I think what we're trying to do is preserve commercial space. That's why I like the option 1, 2, and 3, which requires a little more to do to get to that number, instead of just raising to get to that number now. So that was my concern, and that's why I went with the choices that I did. Thank you.
Real quickly from staff, the four identified projects, what was the total amount of residential units in those four projects or developments if we took that out and changed from the Pine Island Road District? What was the total at the end?
The total is, actually, I'll do the math real fast here. It's just over 2,000, but I will give you an exact number. There's six of them.
Staff recommended four.
Correct.
2248. The drop from the 8,600 number to the 6,111 also include removing the vertically-integrated multifamily, which is an additional 256. But we're just looking at the four projects, Pine Island West, Sandoval, Vantage, and Victory Park. The sum of those units is 2,248 between those four projects.
And the reason that I asked that question is because if you took those projects and get to that 2248, you deduct that out of the 8,615 that we're trying to get to, that leaves us 6367. So the other option is you raise it to the 6367, with the understanding that we're going to try to, try to take those other four projects out. That may or may not happen. That's, that's another way of getting to that 8,615 as well. That's why I'd ask for what that total amount is. Councilmember Steenke.
Part of it is, you beat me to it, and that is that if we just raise the number 8,615 and we proceed with trying to remove those, then we're jumping the number up to 10,000. On slide number 20, I'm seeing more removes than four.
On this slide?
Well, the 20 that I have in my backup material shows Gilbane, Sandoval, Chiquita Falls, Victory Park, Liberty Park, Hancock Creek South, and Vantage.
Yeah, that's from the previous presentation. I think we had six or seven in that one. We had removed, as I recall, I want to say Chiquita Falls is one of them, which is part of a pre-application. We're not taking, this is not taking into account any pre-applications. This is just stuff that is in the hopper right now.
Okay, well, just strategically agreeing with the mayor, if we're still going to proceed with looking to remove units from the Pine Island District, then, then I don't think we go for 8,615 as the number that we increase to. I think we make an adjusted number based on what we still plan on going after. The other is, is, you know, Senate Bill 250, and I sit on land use and economic development for Florida League of Cities, and Senate Bill 250 was a big topic last week with thoughts of, is there going to be presses to change it, you know, so on and so forth. Certainly Cape Coral was not under the microscope when they built that, that bill, if you will. But on the other end, it does not look like there's a huge amount of favor to change it, or at least there won't be a lot of effort to get it changed. But it also isn't forever. So if in fact, a couple, like with Sandoval, if this wasn't voluntary, there will come a time that we could take an action to do that, where it wouldn't be voluntary. So nonetheless, just the biggest point that I wanted to make in our conversation amongst each other while we're here together, is that I wouldn't want to go to 8,615 and then continue going after the removal of these, that there's got to be some decision of a combination of the two.
Yeah, and I think that's why I kind of brought up, just doing the numbers, 6367, if you raise the cap to that, and then add in the projects, the 2,248, that'll get you to the 8,615 that we're trying to achieve, with that understanding.
And if I may clarify, the idea was if we are going to go with the 8,615, was that we'd take nothing out of the Pine Island Road District. We've also shut the door for new multifamily, so that door is shut. What we have right now with the projects under review and what's built, what's been approved, that's what we're looking at.
That's the 8,615?
That's, that's the 8,615. So just wanted to be clear there. We didn't want to have this, have a reprise of this 10 years in the future when more units beyond the 8,615 come in. No, that is the absolute ceiling.
So Mayor, that, I mean, that being said, I would still speak in favor that we need to remove some of these. They don't make sense. So to set a higher number and then not remove anything, I don't think is the right way to go. I think removing some of them is the right way to go, and then we set a number accordingly. That's my, that's my position anyway. that's my position, anyway.
Mr. City Manager, see your light on.
I, I only wanted to just clarify, 'cause it seemed like there was some confusion, Wyatt just clarified. So, the, the, the idea of the fourth option of going to the 8,615 basically abandons options 1, 2, and 3. It just says, forget trying to move everybody out, forget trying to ask for their acceptance and pay for the advertising, and it goes, takes us straight to a text amendment, which can be completed in February, and solves all the projects that are in review. That, that was the only, so I just wanted to clarify that. So, the only thing I did want to ask, so, Councilmember Hayden and Welsh, you had both supported options 1, 2, and 3, doing kind of the, the collective. But, I'm, I'm trying to also take notes on the mayor's thought or suggestion to the council on, in, under option 1, we were removing the cap of the vertical integration, and the mayor had expressed an interest of, of considering putting a cap on that as well. So, if you, if you two could at least just let me know, so, do you have any interest of capping vertically-integrated, or do you think that market should dictate?
Well, for me, I think market should dictate. I don't, I don't have any interest in putting a cap on it right now, until we see what's developing through the, through the pipeline. But, one, one other question, Wyatt, to get to 8,615, you know, it looked like to me that even with removing the four developments, we were still about 1,000 over. And then by increasing the 35%, then we, we, we hit the number. So...
You, you'd have a little wiggle room, that's correct.
So, how does getting us the 8,615 work without, by not removing the four developments? That's, that's the only part that's confusing me.
Oh, yeah, well, the, how we got to the 8,615 is the sum of the existing units in the Pine Island Road District.
Completely understand that.
Okay, all right. That's, sorry?
Is, so is the only way to get there, to take that percentage and move it up to 66? Is that what we're doing?
Rough, yes.
Without removing the, okay. Without removing those four units?
Correct.
Which would get us to, which would get us to that number, and the 60, working off the 63 that you were talking about.
And I think the other question we have to ask ourselves, and make sure we give staff a direction, are you okay taking the number, if that, if that's what we're gonna do, to 8,615, and then leaving vertical integration open? Because what you're basically doing is saying, okay, 8,615's the hard number. Vertical integration, we could have 10,000, 12,000, 14,000 units, because you're leaving that door open. For me personally, I couldn't support that. So, I just wanted to kinda plant that seed in everybody's mind. Are you okay with just leaving that aspect of it unlimited? So, something to think about in your discussions. Councilmember Long?
Yeah, I was just gonna clarify some of the, the math stuff that, that Councilmember Stanky was bringing up. I think the mayor, Councilmember Stanky and myself are all, I think, speaking the same, in the same direction, and we're just having trouble coming together on the math. The 80, the 8,600 is, is the 8,600, no matter what. And I think that was my point. I, I don't know that we don't have a, I don't know that, we have a choice of letting that 8,600 in.
Right.
So, the discussion we're having is, how do you want to dress it up? So, what I was simply saying is, instead of figuring out how you want to dress it up, just call it 8,600 and let it move forward, and that's the most expeditious manner in which we can do that. I certainly appreciate Councilmember Hayden's comments about raising the cap and then not having to come and do this again in the future, but I think the situation that we find ourselves in is that we're, we're in the future here with these numbers. We're, we're well beyond the future in these numbers. The, the cap that was set back in 2002 was, was what they wanted to be, the cap, forever. And so, we're well in excess of that, no matter which way we skin this. And so, for me, I don't, I don't know that that, that holds as much weight in my decision-making, as far as dictating the path forward, as far as the future of that corridor. We're well in excess of, at least from a residential standpoint, what the, the planners here, back in, when this was established, had, had set that out to be. So, we're there. We're well past it. So, yeah, I mean, I, I don't know that I can say much more to help, 'cause it's very confusing, I understand, explain that, no matter what, we're, we're being fed the same sandwich. So, maybe just in the one-on-ones, have, have staff explain how, how, what I'm trying to say, 'cause I'm not conveying it well enough. But, no matter what, we're doing it the same. I can promise you that if we just say, let's move forward to staff's recommendation, we're gonna be back here in two months, because we're gonna have trouble getting some of these people to, to reduce the number to the number that we'd like, in order to transmit the comp plan to the state with the cap that we want. And then that leaves all these developers and all these individuals that are waiting on our decisions to wait even longer for us to come back here again and do the same thing, when we have an opportunity now, to just bite the bullet and get it over with at once. And that's it for me. Thank you.
And just to clarify, Councilmember Long, are you okay with, if we go to the 8,615, leaving the vertical integration out of that number, and just leaving that as an open door?
Yeah, I don't know that, that I'm okay with that forever. I don't, I don't know that I want to muddy the water here with that discussion, unless we want to set that for a different count in the future. I don't know that that's as imminent of an issue as the one that we've got before us. If we want to have that discussion now, sure, I would, I would, you know, be, I would lean towards setting a cap. But, you know, setting that right now, without any of the information available, in addition to the already monumental task that we've got before us here today, is gonna be problematic for me.
Councilmember Cummings?
Yeah, I'm, I'm definitely for a cap, just to prevent any problems in the future. You have to have something set. I'm gonna, I, I get your point, too, Mayor. I, I feel, since we're talking about this, we should add this in, so, we're not bringing it back to another cow, and then do another cow, 'cause you do have people waiting to see what they're going to do. But, I am for the 8,615. You know, the numbers are the numbers, the math is the math. We've talked about this. You explained it to me very well, several times, and I am for the staff recommendations, but we have to have a cap. So, I mean, we kinda got in a situation, kinda like surprise, we had to figure something out, because why? Things were overlooked. So, I just feel like it's, it's important that we kinda come to an agreement on what we feel is the number that's necessary.
Yeah, I think for me, I can, for me personally, I can live with the 8,615, but that's the cap.
Yeah.
And no further, and that's including vertical integration, if we're gonna take it to 8,615. Future councils, just like we are having this discussion today, any future council can have this discussion. They can raise the cap, they can incorporate vertical integration, whatever they see fit at the time. You know, we're having this discussion 20 years after the fact.
And just to add, 'cause I think this will, this will help, that 8,615 counts the current vertically-integrated multifamily. So, if...
Yeah, to me, you just set the cap, be done with it.
Sounds good.
Don't, don't leave that door open, and say, 8,615, that's where we're at. That's, I can support that.
Okay.
But if we're gonna leave vertical integration as an open door, I'll vote no. Councilmember Welsh?
Thank you. What was the last thing you were looking for me, Mr. Elchison?
Oh, so, well, it seems like we're, we're swimming backwards the other way.
Was the, it was the mixed-use cap?
We have, we have a development right now, significant development on Pine Island Road, that has considered as part of its plan vertically-integrated mixed-use residential development. So, on the first floor or two, there's retail shops, and then in a component area of that, in the commercial area, they have, I think it's 256, less than 300 units above. So, kinda like a Mercado Market, or some, you know, Meisner Square-type park situation. So, we were considering, under options 1, 2, and 3, to, to include pulling projects out, but then eliminating the cap on that vertically-integrated mixed-use, so the mayor had brought up. And I just wanted to, for those of you who were supporting options 1, 2, and 3, did you want a limit on the number of units above the commercial or industrial? So, when you support 1, 2, and 3, I was looking to see if you wanted an open checkbook on the residential units above the commercial or not. But, just to clarify, if we go with the new option, which is just take the limit to 8,615, those units that we are, we, we are worried about are covered in that number. So, it's up to you.
So, I guess, what my thought is, removing the cap on mixed-use means we still have the commercial on the ground floor, and then there's no cap above it. But, those residential units are still part of that initial cap?
Yeah, so the, the cap, the initial cap, the 5,030, that's sitting within the Pine Island Road District now, includes vertical or horizontally-integrated mixed-use. We were, we were, staff was attempting to draw a distinction on that, because one of council's policies and goals that have been communicated to, to myself and Development Services numerous times, has been, hey, if, if we can get the commercial on the first floor and get the residential above it, we'd be okay with that. So, we proffered that as a solution to, to split that distinct, that nuance in the res, 'cause right now, the cap just says residential. So, we proffered that as a solution to say, hey, there's another way to look at this. Any of the units that go above commercial, maybe we'll exclude those from the cap limit. And that's how that option was brought to the table.
Okay. Then, to answer your final question for me, I would like to see the cap stay where it is. Not remove that as an unlimited residential over mixed-use, because I don't know if that's the commercial that the Pine Island Road corridor really is what it's meant to be. So, I would prefer to keep it in the cap. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hayden?
All right. To sum all this up, this council is pretty much agreeing to keep the 8,615 moving forward, okay? And that includes the vertical integration component with a cap to the project that's already in the pipeline. But, we are deciding right now that there'll be no more mixed-use on Pine Island Road. It'll be this project, that'll be it. We have decided there'll be no more multifamily on Pine Island Road beyond what's in the pipeline right now. That's where we're at. We're gonna have one mixed-use project up there, yeah, because we've capped it. There'll be no more multifamily, other than what's in the pipeline. That's it. There won't be any 10,000-unit multifamily complex if we are staying where we're at with, with the vertical integration and the cap, okay? So, you know, let, let's be clear of where we're at, and that's okay, to deal with these units. But, remember where we're at as we discuss the future of Pine Island Road. Thanks.
Councilmember Cosin?
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't weigh in on that, actually, the vertical integration, and I don't support a cap. So, I don't know where we are, I haven't been counting. I don't know what the consensus is, but that's where I stand. And I did want to ask a question, because maybe my mind can be changed. I'm gonna put you on the spot, Wyatt. Basically, what Councilmember Long was talking about with just raising the cap to 8,615, and not doing all these dances to get there, why wasn't that something that was recommended, first off? Why did we, why did you recommend the other options? Is there a reason not to do that?
We understood there was some, I guess, some, some heartburn among certain council members, that going straight to that number was unacceptable. So, it wasn't a first, you know, offer from staff. We did want to put in the presentation as a number that we could look to, and, as I mentioned in my presentation, it is, I would say it's probably the lowest hanging fruit, as far as resolving everything in one fell swoop.
Thank you. That's all I need to hear. And, having said that, I'm good with that option.
Councilmember Long?
Yeah, I guess, just as far as the cap, just to call, Mr. Mayor, on some of the discussions that you've had about the vertically-integrated cap.
Excuse, I guess, I didn't provide my context to that bit, which was that, in some sense, because there are some individuals that were told that, that, you know, they're pretty much outside, looking in with regards to future development of multifamily, that that would act as a, a purge valve, so to speak, in my mind, for those developers that have, you know, purchased land or own land and reliance on multifamily, and have been told that they're no longer allowed to do that, that we, and some of it is from maybe potentially a legal perspective, allow them an opportunity to still do that with a nuance. And the nuance is that we're also getting something in return by way of commercial, although, of course, it's not the commercial that we would all like. So, with that in mind, I guess, then, if there was a cap, I would put that cap at whoever we're aware of that would fall into that category. Those individuals that we're aware of, that, that haven't submitted their applications, and would, would have a complaint about, sort of, in their mind, being left out in the cold. And then that would be, sort of, their opportunity to amend that, and still make, eliminate a lemon, so to speak. And then, real, real quickly, on, on, Councilmember Hayden saying, I think I'm getting hung up, and, and it's probably me, but we're not making this decision. This decision's been made for us, as far as no more multifamily on Pine Island Road. Frankly, the decision was made back in 2002, and it should have been thousands less than what we're contemplating here. So, we're actually making a decision to increase that. We're not, we're not the bad guys here. We, we were dealt this hand, and we're doing, and we're playing it as they've been dealt. But, we're not making a decision now to stunt growth in the future. That decision's been made. We're, we're identifying an issue that we've, that we've been made aware of. And to me, this is, staff's done a great job at presenting us the options that we have. But, I don't think that that's a, a, a fair way to categorize it, is that we're, that we're the ones that are stunting the growth. I think that, that, that decision was already made many, many years ago.
Since Councilmember Shepherd haven't, hasn't spoken, I'll give you the floor first.
Yeah, I agree with Councilman Long. I agree with just having a cap.
And that cap is?
The 80...
8,615?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanky?
Thank you. Just, correct me if I'm wrong, vertical integration, since this would be multi-use, you got commercial on the bottom, you got residential on top, don't they still have to go through a traffic study that would be based on those residences? Ingress, egress required, still meet density and height restrictions? Isn't, aren't, aren't all those controls still in there?
Depending on the estimated amount of trips, which I believe is either 200 or 300, yes, a TIS would be required, regardless of the type of project, frankly, whether it's straight commercial, straight residential, or a mixture of both.
So, so, we, we still have some protection from another avenue, not just a number, not just an 8,615, but we, we still have those other controls in place, that we don't end up with a 50-story, you know, multifamily development over, you know, a shoe repair and a doctor's office?
Our zoning, we have a maximum floor area ratio of 1.25, so, to use your example, the 50-story building would have to be on a very large property in order to get that.
So, yeah, and that, that was the only basis on which I, I didn't think the caps were, were necessary inside of the 8,615 for vertical integration, because we've got other controls that deal with that. And if a developer needs that to make their numbers work, then, just like Councilmember Long, I think, said, then we're, we're giving them the option, you know, you can do this. You just gotta go up. You can't go out. You can't take this, this larger part of your footprint and make that multifamily, because that would rob the ability to have commercial there. But, if you want to go up to make your numbers work, that's okay, but you can't go up too far, right?
Right.
And you still gotta provide enough parking for those people, and you still, if you, if we need traffic lights and turn lanes, and you still gotta meet all of that.
And, and also financing for mixed-use development is much harder than it is for either straight residential or straight commercial. So, there, there are certain impediments to mixed-use development, yes.
Yeah, so that, so I would just encourage my colleagues to think about that, that we have other controls in place that will deal with that, than to necessarily include going up inside of that number, since the other controls would help with that. But, that's, that's all. But, thank you.
Yeah, I guess for me, you know, originally, we were at the 5,030. We talked about a 35% increase, which is additional 1,762 units, which would take us to almost 6,800. Then we talked about taking some of the units out of the four identified projects. Again, I think we just, you know, I was at the 61 or the 6,700, when I walked into this meeting, with some opportunities for some vertical integration. If we're gonna go to the 8,615, if you look at that number, what's that, about a 70% increase? 71% increase from 5,030? That's a substantial increase for that corridor, for multifamily. So, for me, the 8,615 would be for vertical and horizontal development, both. That would be the hard number, because that, that's a 71, 71% increase from where we are... increase from where we are today. That's huge, in my opinion, you know? And I think the reason back in two thousand and two, when this was passed, was they were trying to keep, keep it mainly commercial. And if we pass the eighty-six fifteen and then leave the door open for vertical, boy, I mean, it, we, we could almost, you know, add several more thousand pretty quick on, on top of that, easily. So for me personally, if we're going to go to the eighty-six fifteen, and I think we'll have to go down the line to try to give the staff the direction, I can support the eighty-six fifteen as long as it's for vertical and horizontal. I'm not saying that a future council can't come back and say, hey, we got to do something different. That's their, their issue at the time. For me today, eighty-six fifteen would be for vertical and horizontal total. And so I can support that. That'll get the projects in that we're trying to get in. And then let the future councils make a change if, if they need to, like we're doing today. So with that, Councilmember Cosd, since I don't see any lights on, how about if we kind of go down the list and try to give the staff the direction that they're looking for? So they're at, they're asking for eighty-six fifteen. And then I think the vertical integration, whether that's incorporated or not incorporated, I think is what we have to really identify.
Okay, I'm good with the eighty-six fifteen without incorporating the vertical.
Councilmember Stanky?
I'm good with the eighty-six fifteen, adjusted for the removal of any of the units that we removed from the Pine Island District and not including vertical integration.
Councilmember Shepherd?
I'm for the eighty-six fifteen with not including vertical.
I'm good with eighty-six fifteen, that's horizontal and vertical. So that's the hard number. I, I don't want to leave the door open for the vertical so we get to ten, twelve thousand, whatever the number could be.
I'm good with the eighty-six fifteen not including vertical integration.
Eighty-six fifteen, I, I say we keep the cap there, so, including vertical. There's other opportunities for developers to, yeah. I'm saying the same thing three meetings in a row now, so I don't think my position has changed. Thank you.
I'm for the eighty-six fifteen, including the vertical and horizontal.
Eighty-six fifteen not including the vertical mixed-use.
Where does that lead us? Mr. O'Chisholm?
I didn't, I apologize. The one I'm asking, Councilmember Cummings?
No cap on vertical.
Not including cap.
Right.
I have, yeah, I have the, I just, I have the mayor with a, with a cap. I have Stanky with a vertical cap, Welsh with a vertical cap, and Cummings with a, no?
No, I was not a vertical cap.
Oh, then it is three-five, okay. So then we have eighty-six fifteen and not including a vertical cap.
Okay. Give the direction you're looking for.
I do.
Okay. All right, let's move on to the next topic, Florida Department of Emergency Management, legislative priority, the loan program.
I buy clearance for you. You're the best, man.
I try.
Thanks, dude.
Anytime.
Good to see you. All right, see what we're doing here. Go ahead, Mark. I'm ready to rock and roll.
Mayor, councilmembers, Mark Mason, Financial Services Director, appreciate the opportunity to talk about this program, this funding that was announced by the governor about a week and a half ago. In effect, the, the state during the most recent legislative session appropriated $350 million to the Florida Department of Emergency Management to set up a state revolving loan fund for recovery for those cities that were affected by both Hurricane Ian and Hurricane Nicole. And so the award information came down to us via the, the notice that showed up in the, in an email to us, telling us that we had been awarded $51 million in loans, a zero-interest loan for the, for the city of Cape Coral. Now, what this means is, is that this program is, again, it was a legislative appropriation by Florida Legislature. The eligible, eligible projects that are included here are all of our projects, publicly-owned facilities, non-engineered beaches. It's important to identify that as non-engineered beaches because our beach is an engineered beach. So I don't believe that at this point it would be eligible to utilize these funds for that beach. Road sewer, water facilities, et cetera, so, and of course, everything else that we submitted has been essentially allowable for this program. So we submitted one-hundred-and-twenty-four different FEMA projects totaling one-hundred-and-thirty-seven million dollars. Individual projects do range anywhere between twenty-five, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars up to twenty-five million dollars. And we have this, and we've broken it down in summary of the types of projects and where they were funded. Most of them are parks and recreation facilities. All of our fire stations are eligible for this, for any damages that were associated with them. But the most important part with this is that we haven't seen the agreement, but this is a zero percent loan to us that we have to pay back for any funds that we get back from FEMA. And so that's the important part of it. So this is really a revolving loan fund from FDEM. It is not free money for us to be able to just use for whatever it is that we want to be able to use it for. And there may or may not be a forgiveness program associated with this. And again, until we get the, the document and the loan and the, the actual agreement with FDEM, we're not really going to know what that really means as far as any forgiveness is, is associated with it. This is a brand-new program. This is the first time this has ever been used in the state of Florida. It's the first time I've ever known about it. And I suspect that Florida Department of Emergency Management would like to be able to utilize any funds that come back through FEMA and then rotate this out through any future, any future hurricanes, et cetera, that hit the state. So anyways, I'm here for any questions you have on this particular program.
Councilmember Stanky?
Thank you. Mark, did it, zero interest is awesome. Did they, is there any indication of what the payback time period will be?
No, we had, we don't have the agreement yet. So it's, it's, even the documentation that set this program up doesn't have that information. It's when, if we, if we utilize the money for one of our projects and we receive an obligation of funding back from FEMA, when those funds come in, we need to turn around and pay it back to the state. And so that would decrease whatever the loan amount is, you know, on a, on a, on a bait, on, over that period of time. So we have, generally with, with hurricanes, probably two or three years. So I don't expect this money to go away anytime soon, but we do expect that when the grant agreement does come down and the city council approves it, they're going to give us $51 million. And then we'll utilize it to replace anything that we've already spent and then wait until FEMA, which frankly just takes a long time to obligate the funds and return it to us.
So this is meant to get us the money right away?
Correct.
With the fact that FEMA will eventually get to us, and when we get it, we'll give them the money then?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other discussions on this topic? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Scooter, I mean, Mr. Mason. Appreciate the presentation.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you.
Wrong person. The next item on agenda is time and place, I believe, no, roundtable discussion. Any roundtable discussion? Mr. City Manager, you got anything?
I don't, thank you.
Okay, time and place, a future meeting. We have a regular meeting, the Cape Coral City Council is scheduled for Wednesday, October eighteenth, 2023, beginning at four-thirty PM here in council chambers. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.